What's been changed?
Nothing's been changed.
You want to switch these or?
No. Oh, thank you. I'm thirty. Time to start the meeting.
Let them get situated and I'll start the meeting, Commissioner. I give everybody your rise, please, for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. And we have Pastor Todd Johnson is going to lead us in prayer here today.
Shall we bow our heads? Father, it is with gratitude that we approach this meeting and thank you for the opportunity to perform the service of serving our community, the Trumbull County. We ask your blessing upon our commissioners, department heads, staff, and all of the residents of this county that we may work together for the betterment of all citizens. We grant that your wisdom, your peace, and grace would prevail today and that we would be able to move forward with a united spirit to do what is best in the interests of all. We thank you and bless you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, August twenty ninth. That's ten AM in this room. Next regular meeting will be next Wednesday, August thirtieth, ten thirty, also in this room. This is a recorded meeting, so throughout the meeting, if at any time you're asked to speak or you have something to say during the discussion segment, you must approach the mic up front, please, and state your name and where you're from, so we can record it for the record. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. French Co.
Yeah.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
The first thing I'd like to ask is for a copy of our commissioners' meeting file. Then the staff was instructed evidently by the board not to provide that to me. Since the staff was instructed by the board not to.
They can't hear you back there, Commissioner. They can't hear you. It's not recorded for the record.
Okay. Since the staff was instructed not to provide that to me, then I, I'm sorry, they turn it up. They turn it down for me.
You got to talk into it.
Talk into it.
Okay.
Or direction towards it.
Yeah, I do that and then they turn it down. It's a game. So again, can someone turn that off? It's like giving background noise. Whoever's doing that in the back. Okay. I would like to have a copy of that file just for reference since I didn't have it from yesterday's. The staff all refused. Lisa, do you have it with you today so that I can reference?
I do not have it in here with me.
I'd like to request, make a motion for a recess in order for her to obtain that, just in case there's something I have additional questions on or the people here have a few questions on because I haven't had an opportunity to review everything because I didn't have everything. So can you, can we have a recess for her just to grab that? It shouldn't take no more than a minute, or is?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Is there any, is there anyone in the back who can bring that? Does it exist, Lisa?
Yes, I have it.
So why wouldn't you allow me to see it yesterday or today?
Commissioners.
Commissioner, we're not going to go down this road again. We went down this road all day yesterday and he wasted eight hours of taxpayer dollars doing nothing but asking the same question over and over and over and over again. We're not going to play this game today. Let's start with agenda item number one.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the special meeting dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three and accept and approve the video recording of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three commissioner's special meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Abstain.
Item number two is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three and accept and approve the video recording of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three commissioner's regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Because I believe that it's incorrect and we still haven't had any legal guidance or opinion approving them to be done in this fashion. No.
Item number three is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Ms. Christina Stein from the position of Journal Clerk One, Pay Range Seven, at a rate of eighteen thirty-nine per hour to the position of Journal Clerk Two, Pay Range Eight, with the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Office at a rate of twenty thirty-one per hour effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Second, that motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Discussion. There was no, there is no advertising or posting for this position. And I think that it's important that we minimally post. Especially if it's non-union, we don't have to be bound by the CBA and we should be advertising and posting jobs such as this rather than just passing them off. So I just wanted to mention that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Because it wasn't posted nor advertised. No.
Item number four is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number six is to acknowledge the retirement of Mary Lufftheris from her position as Chief Deputy Recorder with the Trumbull County Recorder's Office effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The commissioners join County Recorder Todd LaTelle and the team in the Recorder's Office and Record Center in congratulating Mary upon her retirement and sincerely wish her many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation for which she is most deserving.
Motion approved.
Second, that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Because it is self-explanatory, I, although yes, but I also wanted to be preserved in the record that I think that Todd LaTelle should I did request that the department head, since our clerk is no longer providing these to us, that he leave a copy of that here at the office for me, and he did not. And I'd like to urge him to, when he has the agenda items, to at least be courteous enough that my staff is not and the board is not, that he would at least drop those things off.
Item number seven is to enter into an agreement with Fairfield Computing Services to utilize the online dog licensing system. This system will be three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars per year.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Right in the middle.
And will include.
Right in the middle.
I'd like a motion to table this.
County staff.
I'd like to make.
Currently Fairfield Computing Services is.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Existing dog licenses.
Until today.
This service will enable the county to provide county dog owners the ability to register for new dog licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second, the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
We have discussion. We have discussion. This was discussed in yesterday's meeting, in the public meeting that you popped in and out of, and Auditor Yoder gave a full description of this. How it's going to benefit the county. She went as far as not even describing this, but it lessened to all of us on where the dog license money is utilized, why there's a need for it, and.
And that this is going to facilitate people being able to pay their dog licenses.
Correct.
This is actually a service for the citizens.
I don't see a copy of the agreement. I was given just notes from the commissioners' meeting just this morning, but I review all the agreements before any, I vote on any action and it's referencing an agreement that I don't have a copy of. So I'm just. I don't have.
Did you read your email from last week, Commissioner? You sent it last week. You had a whole week.
Again, let me just explain this. For the last two years, almost, I have received my agenda on the day before. We, we don't get the agenda until the day before printed. And on that date that we actually receive it, we get all of the supporting documentation numbered with the agenda. Now, what there's an effort to do is, is send emails. Some of them, yesterday, we received about twenty of them for next week's agenda. It's, they were items that these two don't normally review related to the Highway Engineers Office.
Don't, don't, don't put words in our mouth and, and talk about our work ethic.
That's what Lisa said yesterday at a public setting that.
No, she said, Commissioner.
That I'm asking for things that aren't normally asked for. So what they're doing.
As the Highway Department has its own fund, and even if we were to say no to those permits, what are we going to do? Chase down the drivers?
That's not it.
We do that as a courtesy to the Highway Department. We don't even have to put this on the agenda. They have their own funding and even if we voted no, it wouldn't matter.
If I review something.
Maybe you should stop putting it on the agenda if it's going to cause problems like this.
Use some, go ahead then. If we review something, if we review, if we vote on something, I want the opportunity to review it once we have our agenda formulated and we don't get the agenda until yesterday. So.
Pass through items.
You had this, Auditor Yoder just said you had this a week ago emailed directly to you, not only with the, the contract, but with the prosecutor's determination.
And, and all.
You want it gift wrapped?
And all the highway items were emailed to you. I have all the emails on Monday. They were emailed to the commissioners. You were CC'd on them. So yesterday you said you did not get the highway permits and all that. All the documentation is there.
Those were for next week.
Those are for this week. It was Monday.
Yes, but they were for next week.
They're for this week.
I just talked to Steve Burberry, but okay.
Those are the ones that are emailed today. I'm talking about the ones that were emailed to you Monday.
Steve Burberry sent a lot of them last week and someone Monday.
They're switching something up to give, to give me less time to, and have to play matchup when there's some, we have staff that has a file.
When you have a file, when you have a, an email from the auditor that says dog licenses, how hard is it to match it up when there's one dog license thing you've ever dealt with in seven months?
And you just open it. Rent it if you'd like. Look at it at your leisure. It was sent, yes, or last week.
I know this is a hard job, but reading emails isn't that hard.
This is the new narrative. Can you shut this woman up in the front? She just continues to talk out of.
Yeah, that's not at all professional. Point of order.
We have a public comment period and I'm going to ask that the president.
We'll ask that the crowd hold their comments till we get to the public comment section.
Yeah, there is. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
President, can we move on?
Yes.
I just want to explain that I, I would appreciate to be able to review the file. Once it's in order, it would be much easier for us as commissioners. We should have access to our own commissioners' meeting file. I just asked.
We do.
We do. It's on your email.
That's not the file.
That's all the information that I get and that Commissioner Malloy gets. So you're asking for special.
Email things so you don't read them. If we put them on the public table in front of the secretary's office, you don't go there and sign them. You want things hand-delivered to your office and spoon-fed to you. We're not going to do that. This isn't preschool.
Hundred thousand dollars a year, folks. Just hit print. That's what we got to do.
Hit print.
Hit print. We got to read our emails. We're bullies.
The whole crowd is a bully then. The whole county is a bully.
I mean, it is what it is.
No, can you, this is not public comment. It's not public comment period. You can't do, you don't do that.
Pardon me.
You have. This is. This is.
I don't know.
This is not public comment.
Well, we could talk about that, but we do not bring things. We do have a policy that we don't bring things to our office because there's some papers have disappeared. Some of them have been important documents that needed signed. We almost lost contracts with ODOT and other companies and had to re-go back to the state and say, we need another contract because this one disappeared.
Not to mention defacing official contracts and documents.
And writing on, scribbling notes. We can't do that. So we enacted a policy for that reason. And only that reason.
No, the policy was created after you signed your resignation, Morrow.
No, that's a policy that I did with Morrow a couple of months ago. I wasn't here when he did that.
So you guys updated something. Okay. It's theater and it's disgusting.
The theater is coming from you.
All right, let's, let's finish the role. We're moving forward. We have county businesses to take care of.
Okay, so item number seven, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Because I have, haven't had the occasion to review it and I came to review the meeting file yesterday as I was instructed or told to do. I shouldn't be instructed as a commissioner, but they said if you come, we'll let you see the file on Tuesday. I didn't receive it. I have to abstain.
Keep in mind that this is a benefit to everybody in Trumbull County. Every dog owner.
Okay.
Is looking to purchase a license. It's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
Item number eight is to authorize the Planning Commission to submit a request to the State of Ohio Appalachian Development Program requesting an extension of time for grant number S dash P dash twenty dash one C S dash one. Project year twenty twenty Appalachian Development Program and authorize the President of the Board of Commissioners, Danny Malloy, to sign any related required documents.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes, only because an employee just printed these for me this morning. I hope she doesn't get in trouble for being helpful.
Item number nine is to authorize the Planning Commission to, to submit a request for an extension of time for grant number B dash F dash twenty-one dash one C S dash one. Project year twenty twenty-one, C D B G Community Allocation Program. Be submitted to the Ohio Department of Development and authorize the President of the Board, Danny Malloy, to sign any related document, required documents.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yeah.
Item number ten is to award a price proposal to G P D Group, selected as the most qualified engineering firm by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three to provide professional engineering services associated with the project year twenty twenty-two C D B G Infrastructure Program, Townsend Avenue Storm Drainage Improvements Project in Liberty Township in the amount of eighty thousand dollars and authorize the Board of County Commissioners to enter, sign, and execute an agreement and any related documents.
Is Julie here with a ranking of this? I was just this morning provided a copy of the contract, but I emailed her yesterday that the attachments I received and download. Is anyone here to provide that?
She wasn't attendance yesterday at the public meeting. I'm sure she would answer your question.
It's not a question. I would have wanted to see the ranking.
Well, you need to ask the question in order for.
She, everyone in the county that I've been dealing with for two and a half years knows that I like to see the rankings in order to verify that the costs or that the, the consultants or the vendor is actually scored. You have to be able to defend your positions when, to prevent litigation in some cases. So I want to see that there is a copy or I want to see a ranking. Was there anything done?
That's a question to ask Julie Green.
Yes, and I asked her to send me the information and to drop it off. And even yesterday when she was here, I asked her if, I asked if she would, they would leave any additional information for me and I didn't get it. She didn't leave it. And then I sent an email yesterday. Once I looked at my attachments and they weren't downloading. So this is what I received today, but I don't have anything to prove that there is a ranking process associated with this. That's all. No one, no, did you guys receive it yesterday? Did you receive anything like that yesterday?
We call the vote, please.
She didn't give you that? Does anyone on the, does the clerk have that?
I need somebody to move.
I make a motion to approve.
A second, the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Only because I'm only because I haven't seen anything to verify that there is an appropriate ranking to determine that they were the most qualified of the proposals that were submitted. I'm saying no, just because I haven't reviewed that and it hasn't been provided to me.
We are the ones that selected them as the most qualified on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, well.
The three of us.
I'm looking for.
You're asking for Julie's ranking. We're the ones that already voted them and we already approved them. Item number eleven, please.
Item number eleven is to approve or deny construction of the Elm Road Water Improvements Project. County project number two dash W dash sixteen located in Bizetta Township. The public hearing for this project was held on August third, twenty twenty-three. Results of the public hearing and public comment period indicate thirty-five point fifteen percent of the property, property owners are opposed to said project and sixty-four point eighty-five percent are in support based on benefited frontage.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, that motion.
Discussion. Are we going to release? I'd like to make, I'd like to ask if we can waive a privilege on our legal opinion related to this matter because it doesn't look like it was a kosher process. May we waive privilege if you guys are confident that this moving forward is.
I'm very confident that it's a legal process. Yeah, we can, we can release it.
Privilege on this? Okay.
There's nothing in there that says this isn't a legal process.
This is, it says ultimately, I recognize there's been some talk of possible legal challenges. It's difficult to predict whether claims would be made and how they might be resolved. However, that's because, because the petitions do not seem to be legally required in this case. It would be it would be likely difficult to, for a property owner to challenge a project, project on those grounds. A person could attempt to argue that the petitions are too old or signed by an incorrect party, which is what happened there. And the process leading to the water line has been unreasonable, which is what happened there. But the argument does not appear to be as strong as failure to follow statutory, as strong as the failure to follow statutory process, which would likely lead to much more, much more successful challenge. Okay. Therefore, I strongly encourage the Board and Sanitary Engineer to review the attached procedure to be sure that the legal requirements were met. So.
What does that say it's illegal to do?
If you look at the attached procedure, we did meet it.
So it says strongly, so there's an attached.
You don't even have to get petitions for these projects.
So it says.
Says it right there.
There is an attached procedure. It's, it's, it's pretty detailed and very straightforward. One of them, the first one involves determining the scope, the scope of the improvement and the scope had changed. I'm looking at the, some other notices. I, I can't verify that these were done correctly given the fact that a lot of the things that Gary Newbrow did were questionable.
Public hearing to, to go over all those changes. Everything has been transparent.
Mailed hearing notices were supposed to be sent to the property owners and in some cases, they weren't actually sent to the property owners. They were sent to people who were purchasing on land contract. That doesn't qualify. There were property.
Case.
There are.
Wouldn't have made a difference in the percentage.
There, they still have a valid legal argument.
Wouldn't make a difference in the percentage. So even if they, if, even if they were to challenge that, it would still be almost sixty forty.
The original and the original.
I'll go back to my point that you don't need petitions to do these types of projects. And furthermore, this is a very important project that we're able to infuse ARP money in. We're able to, that we're able to hopefully develop that corridor in Cortland there on Elm Road for future development.
Unfortunately, we have a director over there that doesn't necessarily follow legal process.
You're not going to go after the director here and make accusations like that.
We're, we're shunning future development, future progress, future infrastructure and improvement in an area that desperately needs it. And the people are saying that. Sixty-four percent are saying that.
Let me clarify this. We don't, we should be doing things by the book, by the procedure, by the state law. And in so many cases, it's just ignored because this is how we've always done it. In fact, at that public hearing, when I questioned the process, the response from Gary Newbrow on the record at a public hearing was, this is how we've always done it. So we're going to use some of those. So those petition surveys are different from interest surveys. We're going to morph them together. We're going to change the project and it's extremely questionable, the process that took place. In addition to that, I just want the public here to know that the sixty-five percent does not necessarily mean that they agree. There are just people who didn't respond.
That's the way, that's the way the law is.
I understand that, but it's a bit misleading to, to let people know that. This is, so third, it's.
Are you urging people to sue the county? Is that what you're doing for development?
This was brought to us by the trustees of Bizetta for the good of their township. They know their township way better than we do.
Commissioner, anytime anybody can sue anybody, and yes, they're going to put those provisions in there, but there's nothing illegal about the process.
They came to us and asked for water lines.
We submit it to the press so they can see.
Follow the statutory process. That's the problem that I have with it.
That's your opinion. You're not an attorney.
You're not an attorney and the, and the opinion says otherwise.
Okay. No, actually, that's why he told us to review it and to determine that we followed it.
Could always be a legal challenge in any of these cases, especially when you're dealing with millions and millions of dollars in projects.
I'm just saying that the.
But you're fanning the flames of this sort of people suing the county for development. I understand it.
There's a conflict with you with this too, Commissioner. I brought this up last week. You were going to bet for a place that you hold your campaign meetings. They're not on your campaign finance where you pay them any rent. There's no in-kind from the church on your campaign finances show that they donated the, the room for you to use. But you have had your campaign meetings there. There are pictures of your car and testimony from people that went to your campaign meetings that that's where you held your meetings last time, at that church. And now you're trying to protect the church. For water. There's a conflict.
That church doesn't even have the, that church doesn't even have the ability to sign because they're, they're not the owners. It's another person named David Nadel, I believe, that owns the property and they incorrectly sent it to the wrong person. So we have, we have parcels that had the wrong person sign them. In addition to that, I just want to put out there, there are a lot of people, because it is thirty-five percent opposing. Normally, when we have a project like this, the approval, there aren't many people who are disapproving, who don't want it. But in this case, the reason for that is because of the cost. It's going to cost the people. There are a lot of money and just last week or I believe it was last week or the week of.
We're saving them a hundred and fifty dollars a foot by us putting in ARPA money that they will never have this opportunity.
Why did you vote for ARPA money?
I'm just saying, I, I'm going to complete my statement, my comment. That is going to cost the people there a lot of money. So the biggest concern for the residents who live there, the thirty-five percent of the people who were, who said no is because of the tremendous cost and the cost to the, associated with, there is also discussion about the future increases in water. So these are people who have wells. Thirty-five percent of them are happy with their wells and the, and that they're, and then they also don't want to have the cost increase. Gary Newbrow just admitted that he's going to increase everyone in Trumbull County's water rates.
They can keep their wells if they want.
They don't have to tie in.
They don't have to tie in.
With additional cost. So I just.
Have to cost the tying in.
All of the costs are going to be increased and, and then you were just mentioning that, um.
You are against infrastructure expansion in Trumbull County because wherever we go, it costs people money. So the townships out there are going to get no water and no sewer under.
Sure. I'd like to reiterate this. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity for these people in this area. Never again will we have the infusion of these federal and state funds to this amount, to make this as affordable as we've made it right now.
Understand it being affordable to, to them. Is it affordable to the county? How are we going to plan for, for, for maintenance of?
It wasn't affordable to them.
What we just, what we just, what, what we just, what?
Commissioner, there's twenty three other townships that would jump at the opportunity to get what Bizetta Township is getting right now.
Of course, they would.
They would love for us to expand water into their area and pay a hundred and fifty dollars of the cost per foot on that.
And contribute ARP money, which you voted for towards the project.
Let's talk about the, let's talk about the costs. Let's talk about the cost. We also said, you also identified that there's going to be a need for a new pump station and that that's going to be subsidized by all of the rest of the citizens in Trumbull County who have water with the county because they've consolidated those funds.
If we were going to have water to the northern part of the county, we're going to need multiple pump stations. That's part of getting water.
To be a lot more improvements needed to be paid for by the county that.
We shouldn't make any progress.
You shouldn't advance the county. You shouldn't expand.
I just think that you should be considering the cost to the end users and those are the people here in Trumbull County.
Or we've made it as affordable as it'll ever be and they're sixty four percent that are saying they want it.
You're so narrowly focused. You're not looking at the fact of the other increases, the, the pump station costs and the fact that everything's being consolidated. And then we're going to have an, a water rate increase as well and our property taxes and our property taxes are going to be up, going up. I, I feel bad for the, the people who can't afford it.
Did you want to say, we have a Bizetta Township trustee with us here today. Did you want to say anything?
Benefiting.
All right. Thank you.
Can you hit the microphone, Mike, please?
This is a Bizetta Township trustee.
And he's a benefiting property too.
What is?
Yeah.
What does that have to do with it?
I'm just saying.
He lives there. He shouldn't live there.
Houses on that street. It's going to cost him a hell of a lot of money to be able to take a bath with city water.
Yeah.
County water.
Okay.
Okay, let's take the vote.
Okay, item number 11, Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes, motion approved. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because the process was incorrect per the prosecutor's opinion, and I, I believe it would have done better.
Not true.
It correctly would have been better. I just have to.
Submit that for the record. It is not true.
And.
Item number 12.
Congratulations, Bizetta.
Despite, despite there.
Item number 12 is to grant permission to the county engineer to close the road listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 13 is to concur with the county engineer to grant special hauling permits to haul steel coils on county roadways with the company listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah.
Item number 14 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right of way permits by the companies listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Discussion, all, all of these, uh, that are here, items 12, 13, 14, 15, um, all, all of these individual things, um, come up to one, two, three, four, five, six of them equal one. So that's basically, I want to say that we weren't furnished these yesterday and, but I.
Furnish them Monday.
No, uh, and we were not.
Ask you, I will provide those to the press.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff. There's an employee who actually printed these for me before they went home yesterday and that was kind. Given the circumstances in the office where they're instructed not to help me, but.
After the five hours of following them around with a cell phone, they, they finally did that and they were able to. It's just, it's laughable. It's laughable. They were kind enough to do it. Were you not kind enough to follow them around with a cell phone for five hours? Take them away from their work?
It's unbelievable that staff wouldn't allow me to just review. I don't need copies if they would just let me review a file. Once it's, it's not asking for, you know, the. It's, I don't have the file until I have the agenda in order to.
Have all the agenda items emailed to you. Stop playing games.
No, that's the, that, this is the game that you're playing now for two and a half.
Commissioner, you, you have.
You've actually made public records requests for it and you have the public record.
Commissioner, you have an MBA. You're not dumb. You know how to print. You know how to do things. Or did you copy someone else's work and have them copy it for you?
It's a public administration degree, not a business administration. And that's what's unfortunate is I have this uh, experience and you're allowing the staff to run amok. So.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 15 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits by the companies listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 16 is to approve a school resource officer agreement between the Trumbull County Commissioners, the County Sheriff Paul Monroe and John F. Kennedy Catholic School for police protection and services for the John F. Kennedy Catholic School, its buildings and activities of the school, its personnel and students for the 2023, 2024 academic fiscal school year, which is July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. John F. Kennedy Catholic School agrees to pay Trumbull County Sheriff's Office the amount of sixty three thousand, five hundred seventy eight dollars and fifty eight cents. And the sheriff agrees to furnish one deputy to John F. Kennedy Catholic School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, did anyone receive a projected cost associated with the contract to verify that the.
All the soft costs are covered.
That, that, all the money coming. I, I have not seen any budget. They're constantly over budget and I'm concerned that we don't have any, there's been nothing except for the contract. Uh, the agreement provided me, to me that doesn't, but nothing that shows that the costs are going to be covered by the contract. And that is something that if we have a budget officer or someone on.
I, I had a meeting with the sheriff and he had a full slideshow presentation with ma- uh, Major Palmer and the sheriff with me and went over every cost because I asked that same question. He does have a slideshow presentation. If you would like to see it, I'm sure they would give you the same presentation.
Yeah, I, I did come in and ask that they leave that with me or I didn't receive it. There's no reason that they couldn't provide that because that's something that I've been asking for since I started because I know Commissioner.
Well, there is a little conflict because you are suing the guy.
Commissioner.
Yeah, he's got to limit his contact.
So yeah, he, I'm sure he doesn't want to do more for you than he has to right now with the tape recorder in his face.
Okay, um. I know Commissioner Cantal Mesa said that there are no costs associated with vehicles, but there actually in fact are. So I just want to make sure that all of the costs are covered so that the rest of the county taxpayers aren't subsidizing the fees for a particular school.
Commissioner, we, we are, we are just being.
In any way.
Not going to defund the police and we are going to try to protect students in schools.
I agree.
And I'm not going to nickel dime schools as to how they're going to pay us back. It's one government agency to another government agency. We shouldn't be trying to make money on them.
As a matter of fact, the point of order, the sheriff brought up to my attention.
Costs are covered.
Costs are covered.
As a point of order, commissioners, the sheriff brought to my attention there in that meeting that we have sheriffs at the front door that protect us every day, that screen people that come through. And they have never been paid for that. We assigned them there. We put them there. We don't reimburse them and we don't put it in their budget. So we're talking about an operating deficit with the sheriff's department. We don't even pay our own bill to the sheriff's department when it comes to that. We need to look into that to make sure that all bills are covered with that and, and work with our auditor to do that. Martha.
Right. Thank you.
Didn't get anything on it.
I'll take the roll. Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Only because I haven't received any funding information or projected cost to ensure that every cost is covered. Um, no, that's the only reason.
God bless the kids at JFK if you had your way. Item number 17.
Item number 17 is to approve a school resource officer agreement between the county commissioners, the county sheriff Paul Monroe and the Trumbull Career and Technical Center, TCTC, for police protection and services for the Trumbull Career and Technical Center, its buildings and activity of the school, its personnel and students for the 2023, 2024 academic fiscal school year, which is July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Trumbull County, Trumbull Career and Technical Center agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office one hundred twenty seven thousand, one hundred fifty seven dollars and sixteen cents. And the sheriff agrees to furnish two deputy sheriffs to TCTC.
Motion to approve.
Second emotion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, only because I've only received the contract without any supporting documentation to ensure costs are covered. I can't vote blindly, so I have to vote no.
Item number 18 is to approve a request for an extension of the inmate food service provider contract with Trinity Service Group, Inc. And this is for the Trumbull County Jail for an additional eight week period.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a copy of that? Does anyone have a copy of that, um, extension?
Commissioner, they were here yesterday.
It's an extension of the same contract they have that's on file.
There's no change.
They're doing the new contract. This is to give them more time. It's just expanding it eight weeks.
It says that they.
Under the same terms.
And it's been looked at by the prosecutor's office and it's good to move forward.
This says is that the Trinity Service Group has requested a slight modification of the conditions.
Correct, for next year's contract. So they need eight weeks here to figure it out and whether they want that or not.
I'd like to be able to see that. That's normally what I do is review these and no one.
You're not an attorney. The prosecutor's office is reviewing.
We are the board of commissioners and it's our duty.
Prosecutor's office says that it's good to go, we vote on it. Not when you say it's good to go.
So then why don't we wait until they look at it and give it to us before we vote on it?
They've already okayed this extension. They're looking at the new contract and the scope being different. And they're seeing if, yes, the scope is changing.
Thing is, if you have a contract, you, and it's.
Not all the time. That's why the prosecutor's looking at it. I understand what you're saying. If process, process changes and the scope changes, you may have to go out to bid again. We don't know if that's the case. The prosecutor's office is looking at that and will determine.
We're the board of commissioners and we're voting on that. And I think it's important for us.
All the prosecutors.
No, I, I.
We are under the same terms for the next eight weeks we've been under for the last year.
We can, can, can you manage the meeting better and allow people to speak one at a time?
If I manage. There's only one thing I would change and that would be to shut you up if I could any better.
Take note of that. Okay, so, um, as I, I, as I was saying, I don't think that the board of commissioners should be voting on any contract matter that we haven't at least had an opportunity to look at. Uh, it's unfortunate that the rest of the board just rubber stamps, but I don't do my job like that.
Unfortunate that you play attorney here every week and you're not an attorney.
Playing attorney.
So you're looking at the contract and you have no legal background to determine what's, what's legal and what's not.
I'm sorry.
We have a prosecutor's office for that. Let them do their job. We have an extension. They're looking at the next contract. If we have to rebid it, we will. They will let us know. This is a process. It's not that difficult.
I, I understand that I'm not an attorney, but I've worked in contracts for probably 20 years and I, it's just.
That doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. You're not a contract attorney.
It is, it is something.
It doesn't. We're not going to take legal advice from you.
I have, I have seen things that needed to be corrected relative to leases. A lot of the things that I have caught on our contracts have been corrected. There have been wrong dates, typos, other, other errors. And that is what my job is to do, is to be the eyes and the ears and the voice of the taxpayers and to make sure that from my perspective, to the best of my ability, things are done correctly. And I don't think it's asking anything.
Which taxpayer is demanding that you do this? Which one? Are there any taxpayers in this room? Show of hands that are demanding that you do that.
Not asking anything unreasonable for me to be able to review what I vote on.
Do you realize that all these important items, if we had another commissioner that was doing the same thing as you, this would be complete obstruction. This would be complete obstruction and no progress would happen. This is an important contract with the jail. This needs to be extended.
Okay.
If they say they're not ready to sign, there's two options. They either sign it or they don't sign it, or they get an ex- extension, a third option. And that's all they're asking for is we need more time so the prosecutor can decide if it's fair or not. That's all they're asking for is time. On the same contract, we already approved, same one they've been working under for a year.
See it? What is, what is the change that they're trying to make? Cause I haven't.
That's for the next contract. That has nothing to do with this.
Wait, the sheriff's department and the prosecutor's office are lying to us that they're reviewing this.
I want to see it.
So, so you're calling them liars?
No, I'm just saying that I get, I am here to do my.
Did you ask for it?
I, I do ask for everything supporting the, uh, agenda items and whether or not the clerk.
Did you ask the sheriff and the prosecutor for that information? Playing games. We've got to stop.
Hey, Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Uh, because I won't vote on something that I haven't received, reviewed or received. No.
Okay, item number 19 is to award the lowest and best bid as submitted by Integrated Voting Systems for the furnishing of all labor, material and equipment necessary to furnish delivery and printing of opti- optical scanned paper ballot, pa- paper ballot pages for use by the Trumbull County Board of Elections for four elections through the primary of 2025. The maximum cost per election will be fifty three thousand, two hundred dollars. Cost for four elections will be the approximate amount of two hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars. And to enter into a contract with Integrated Voting Systems for said purchase.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, uh, this, this is not the lowest bidder?
It is when taken into account.
No, it's not.
When you do double sided ballots, it is. And we do with the majority of those. We've done one.
I have. She handed them out at the meeting yesterday.
Done one single sided ballot and that was the last.
They're the same exact bid, but when it comes to only two pages, they are lower.
Okay.
They are lower by.
And most.
Three hundred and forty dollars.
Ninety percent of our ballots are two sided. So look at the two sided as opposed to the one sided.
Okay, so I looked, I looked at the, the cost. Um, and it was a thousand, it was like, it was, it was not a large amount, but it was a little, um, it was.
For the one sided.
Hang on. It was about a thousand, something more. My point is if you're not going to go with the lowest overall, then you should be able to have some type of ranking that shows that this was the best. And I asked for that and they said that they're picking them, uh, they're picking them based on their past working relationship with them, but there's no type of grid or evaluation tool to prove that they were, um.
They're going on cost. That is completely false. They are going on cost.
They're going on cost and success with having boards with them before.
All things being even. Explain it to everybody here. And you obviously need to explain to. Do you have the paper? We can show you. You can put the thing on me. I don't care.
No, it's.
Give me the paper so everybody can see.
No, I, I.
I already reviewed it yesterday.
Communicated with, with her and it's, it's, it's the lowest.
Just so everybody understands, she's right and to a certain degree that the, that the lowest cost for the one sided ballots is lower for the one company that we didn't choose. We've only used one sided ballots, probably maybe ten percent of the time. Majority of the time we use two sided ballot. The two sided ballots are actually cheaper from the other company. So we are taking the cheaper price. And in the long run, you're saving money because you're doing more two sided ballots and you are doing one sided ballots where there's a savings.
Okay, so she, that makes sense. She responded to me and she acknowledged that there wasn't the lowest bid, but she said that in her opinion, it's the better one, but there's no.
That's not true. She's saying it's not the lowest for the one aspect of it. That's not hardly used.
Okay.
Mr. Smith can go over it with you because he was there at the meeting yesterday too.
And so it was the, the director of the board of elections and I understood her clearly.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
And by the way, I want to say, I believe that one of the companies was one that called us with a problem with the way the, there was.
With a problem.
Are, is this the company that there was a bidding irregularity and it had to be rebid?
These are quotes.
I'm just, I, I'm just asking. There was something that happened recently and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't them because I feel like when people have that issue, then they're.
You don't know if they are or not, but you're throwing it out there on the table.
Asking.
For what reason?
I don't even know what you're talking about. Somebody called. They didn't call me. I know that.
Can stop with your snide comments, sir.
Your vote for item 19, Ms. Frenchco?
Uh, because it's, we have to. If it says lowest and best and it's not the lowest and there's no proof that it's the best because of ranking, then there could be problems with that. And there's, there's no supporting documentation.
You think there's a ranking out there for what's best? What, how would you rank them? In your professional years of experience and ballot proposals, what is the best?
I, I have the email from Stephanie if anyone wants to see it. And it's, and the best is actually that you develop some type of, if you're asking me. if you're asking me how I would do it.
Yeah, I'm asking you.
Then you would, you would, you would define parameters that are objective and not subject and the subjective, and that's how you would determine that they would be the best, just.
You don't think good customer service and having no problems with this company in the past doesn't carry any weight?
Well, that's been one of the problems that we've had in our construction and with some of our contractors in the past is that there's, there, we're calling them the lowest and the best and there's the, though the board of commissioners adopted something in twenty eighteen before I was here that identifies how those should be ranked. The board of commissioners isn't having the, that happen before they vote.
Be ranked, Commissioner?
It's a, there's a twenty eighteen resolution that gives the criteria before awarding bids and how to determine if they're, if they're the best. The board, we've been over this before.
Part of that do you think is not being followed?
None of it.
None of it?
Yeah.
So the county engineer, everybody in sanitary engineer just picking contracts that will. Giving it to all their buddies.
Sanitary is, has been doing that. I do notice that whenever.
I think you wanna give it to your buddies. That's what I think.
When the planning committee, okay. When the planning commission does it, they'll give you a good example because they actually do rank them in the criteria that it's supposed to be done. So, so, some, some of them do it right and some of them don't, but we as administrators should make sure that everything.
Taking an awful big leap dive into what contractor should get what. I don't even wanna be involved in. I don't, I want.
I think we're the ones that ultimately decide who gets the bids.
The score should come from the department head?
Yes. You wanna score it?
What I'm saying is there is no scoring sheet if they would.
Yes, there is.
Where is it for this? Where is it for all the other ones at the sanitary?
It's the lowest.
It's not.
Is so your vote for item nineteen?
I already said, no.
No, you didn't say.
No. Because it's, we can't verify that it was lowest in the, in the past. It was, it wasn't lowest. Okay.
All right, that concludes our regular portion of the meeting. You know, at this time we'll entertain any comments from the crowd for the good in order of, uh, Bill Hart, let's start out with you because you got something good.
We can start out with the HR director. She's.
No, we're gonna start off with Bill Hart. I'm the president of the board.
Mr. Bill Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. Um, I wasn't here yesterday. I was off. But I have some light that I like to shine on the commissioners. Myself and Mister Kingam Laysa have been working hard to find a home for the dog pound. I have a letter from the Animal Welfare League that is voted to move forward in donating a parcel of their five acres to the Trumbull County Dog Pound.
Who is the little section that they would like to present? There's on it yet. There's no size yet because we're not determining yet. Lot knows how to plot it.
So with that, we have a home possibly, Commissioner.
So. So this is what happens when we don't chase employees around with phones. We actually get things done. And, uh, this is a tremendous private public partnership with the Animal Welfare League. Uh, this plot of land is perfect, uh, for, for the dog pound. I wanna thank their board, their director, Laurel Lynn Shandor, and all their board unanimously voted. Uh, cause at the end of the day, the animals matter and, um, they know, they know at the end of the day, it's a one stop shop. If you don't adopt a dog here, you can adopt a dog there. We can have joint, uh, events together. It's gonna be perfect. Um, the next step in this is, uh, retaining engineering firm, surveying the land. Uh, hopefully they can do that all together. I know Baker Bednar had started this process in two thousand fifteen. The architecture firm had started this process in two thousand fifteen when we wanted to move forward then. I know they have some renderings. I know they worked with Healthy Hearts and Paws on their, on their building in Warren. Uh, I moved that we, ob- obviously it has come under the fifty thousand dollar threshold in the procurement policy, but, um, this is something that is uh, a very positive win, uh, for the, for the people of Trumbull County. Again, private public partnership, government strives to do that all the time and it's a win-win for both. Uh, Bill, I wanna thank you. Been so instrumental in this. We made countless, uh, appearances and, and, uh, board members and, and directors out there. Uh, they're welcoming us with open arms and they realize that, that, uh, um, Trumbull County has a need here. And, and they, they know that the dogs come first. So anything that's gonna benefit the dogs and the animals and the pe- and the adoption of those dogs uh, is, is of highest importance. So I mean, it's over a two hundred fifty thousand dollar donation to the county essentially. So um, now we, now we spec it out. Now we build what we need. We work with our dog warden and Bill as, as far as, um, our needs. I, I think that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think that, uh, Healthy Hearts and Paws has been a very has been tremendous for the area, number one, but, but has been, uh, what they're doing with their building is something we can mimic. Um, so, uh, hats off to the Animal Welfare League. This is great news for Trumbull County. We've been working very hard on this and I wanna thank Bill Hart.
I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Mayor Franklin and the Service Director and, and Paul McCloskey. We are, we are doing many phone calls for last year plus to get this done.
And they, and they were generous. The mayor warned, you know, uh, as that goes without saying, but he was very generous and looking at different properties. None of which unfortunately suited our needs or the, or the residents' needs. So you know, we started off with this leasing space from the Animal Welfare League and it went full circle. We came back and, and with the donation of property, we're gonna be able to build there, gonna build a flagship facility for the animals. And, uh, I'm excited about it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I, I just state my name?
Yes, please. Where are you from?
My name is Leah Dotson. I'm from Warren, Ohio. And excuse me, I'm just, cause I really don't wanna miss a single point. Um, so I wanna talk about, there were, there was a comment made about my neighborhood last week and it was made by you, Mister Malloy. And there's no way I could hear a comment like that and not come and address it. It was said, and you doubled down on it, that during the groundbreaking ceremony that you said in a workshop that the only reason that people come over to that Westline area is to buy drugs and step over dead bodies. So that was highly offensive. And you doubled down on it and you said, you kinda looked for cosigners and you said that the mayor echoed those same sentiments and you said that Pastor Johnson echoed similar, similar sentences, sentiments. I don't know what they told you in private, but I was at that groundbreaking ceremony because I live not even a block away. And I can assure you, nobody said what you said. They said, they spoke to it being a disadvantaged neighborhood, but you paraphrase that into words that you spoke from your own consciousness in your own heart. Um, and so I feel as if people talk a lot about our community being disadvantaged and we don't talk hardly enough about our community being disinvested. Because Mister Malloy, you as a commissioner, I need you to understand that you were not there with your suit in your hard bottom shoes. None of you were there with your suits and your hard bottom shoes on streets that I know you would never walk on if it wasn't to be over there for a photo op. You weren't there to help the pores. You were there because the west side of Warren has been systemically disinvested for decades. You were there celebrating the fact that this was the first time that the west side of Warren has received an investment of that magnitude since I've been living and I'm forty four years old. So that's why you were there. So quick history lesson. When blacks moved up from the south during the Great Migration, they found amazing jobs at the factories. They finally became part of the upper working class and they moved into the west side, which is the upper working class neighborhood. When we moved in, white flight happened and they moved out. When white flight happened and moved out, so did the grocery stores. So did our schools, so did our hospital, so did our, um, our, um, our, um, police and fire stations. And then what happened is redlining where you concentrated poverty on the west side. So when you remove anchor institutions and concentrate poverty, this is what you come up with. So I really am imploring you as commissioner to change your paradigm about how you're thinking about the west side. Because it's literally the same exact sentiment as the movie Cars, like Disney gets it. So I need for commissioners to think a little bit more broadly about what that looks like. And just so you know, your words were not talking about inanimate objects. You were talking about people. I live not even a block from there. I was not invited, but guess who gonna stop me from coming? Cause that's my neighborhood. I showed up in jeans and t-shirts because I live there. And Mister Malloy, this is not me popping my collar and bragging. I have an MBA from Ohio State University. My fiance has a, 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 a bachelor's degree in accounting from Y S U. We got driveway, not even a block from where you were. That's not me popping my collar. That's me letting you know that everybody who lives. We are sad luck story and we ain't got nowhere else to go. That's my community. That's my home. I have plenty of chips to move to Howland if I wanted to. If I was the. Better, the only reason I went to Bezetta, there's nothing, there, there's a completely different sentiment in saying Bezetta is rural and there's not much to do. And me saying, I don't know why nobody would go to Bezetta. They should only go to Bezetta to like tip cows and like create meth labs. See how those are completely different sentiments? It was very very. I want you to change your paradigm because you're a commissioner. And if you are concerned, two more things and I'm done. Keep your people from the outside, from coming into my community and buying those drugs and contributing to that problem. Cause we don't make that problem on our own. And secondly, invest. Because again, that is what we were there celebrating is investment, not y'all helping the pores.
I, I'd just like to add one thing. I, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. That's one of, you know, you know, one of the, one of the things, one of the places where we looked at the dog pound was in the sixth ward, was in the ward you're running for council for.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that was shot down by the residents. Trumbull County wanted to invest in that community.
Yeah, we don't want a dog pound.
You don't want.
We don't want a dog pound.
Even if, even if it was hiring from that ward.
No, we have, that's what the, and thank you all for your investment over there. Um, amazing. Thank you for the investment that came over there, but.
For the dog.
But I, I really hope we have a little bit more consideration for us over there. We don't want.
I wish we had a little more consideration for, uh, the minority employee from the dog pound, the only one that you guys put on unpaid leave for like a year and a half. So please don't do that.
That, that has nothing to do with this. We were gonna, we were looking at a disadvantaged neighborhood and hiring preferentially from that neighborhood.
So I can't speak because I'm not counseling. I did not, I, I can't, I did not do a survey over there. So I'm, so, and if that's what the community said and they, they said they don't want a dog pound, it probably has something to do with nuisances. It probably has something to do with noise ordinances. Because it's very close to residential and they don't want a dog pound because.
But I'm just telling you that's an investment.
So I, I get it, but, uh, but, but we're not. We have a lot of pride and this is what I'm trying to get you to understand. We have pride over there. Put a dog pound in the middle of your neighborhood and see if y'all, do y'all want a dog? There is one, I lived on Anderson before. There is one on Howland in the back of the woods in Howland. You gotta go all the way down Howland. On Anderson where the dog pound is at in Howland, it is on Anderson and it is way. It is way down the street. There is not anybody who lives there. So, but, bottom line, we didn't want it and I can't say why we didn't want it.
I'm just saying that to say that.
You, you kinda are.
Well, I'm just telling you to say that there's never been investment there. We just had this, we, Bill Hart and I just went over there.
Thank.
Not, not a year ago and to try to get the dog pound there.
And it's been.
Been a perfect space.
So let me ask you this. Where was the investment before that? Cause it's been thirty, what, I'm forty four?
Disagreeing with you. I'm just saying.
But I'm just letting you know, I'm forty four. We are not so desperate that we want anything. If the voters over there in my district say they don't want a dog pound, we don't want a dog pound. It's been forty four years.
And there happens to be another, another minority.
But, but please keep working to get investment.
I, I, no, I am gonna say something because I think it's kind of insulting to say, hey, we'll, we'll give people in this community a couple of dog kennel jobs and we don't have any one, uh, any. Hang on.
A disadvantaged community can have preferential treatment from that neighborhood.
How about whenever we hire directors for departments? And how about whenever we have people with NPAs who are minorities in our com- in our county? Instead of to not even including them in interview processes and we, we promote people.
How about we don't harass department heads?
Promote.
That are women in our.
We have, we have an opportunity though. I'm, I can't let that comment go that that's the only kind of job that we're looking.
And, and I'm not, and. But, but this is what I'm gonna say because it was brought up. Again, I came down here before when we were talking about bids and we were talking about contracts. And I asked specifically then, where is the minority representation in these contracts and these biddings? That you all admitted then that we need to do a better job at. Start there. I asked, where is the minority representation in hiring? Start there. Again, we are a proud people. It is not, we are not so disadvantaged that we are willing to accept anything. If the people over on the west side don't want a dog pound, I don't think that's, I don't think that should be used as a deflection to say, we offered y'all a dog pound a, a year ago. And it's been forty four years since we had investment. So the bottom line is this. So, so here, so here's the bottom line. Please continue to work on investment. I appreciate that. I do. I do appreciate that. Please continue to work on investments that gives agency to the voice of the people and the people who are looking for the investment so that it can work in symbiosis. I love that. We didn't want the dog pound. We super appreciate the, the west lawn. But what I'm telling you is to say that a whole side of town, there's no reason to step over there unless you're looking for drugs and dead bodies. But show up for a photo op is atrocious, is disrespectful and I, I, and it was abhorrent.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna answer that too. And I appreciate you coming here, calling me on the carpet with that. I do owe an apology to Mayor Franklin. What I did is in our public meeting that we had our workshop, I quoted and it, and I quoted the wrong person. I have a newspaper article here that is, this is from, this is from the Business Journal on Wednesday. And it says, this is from Pastor George Johnson of the Agape Assembly Church. His quote, Agape, his quote was, this area used to be the worst area in the city of Warren. The crime, the dope, everything. That was the quote that I was referencing and I, I took that as a a building block when we were all there celebrating. Some of the richest people in Trumbull County were in your neighborhood, investing in your neighborhood. I took that as a major change for this county that we are gonna make a, an impact as a community. That, that there was a spotlight on that area that used to have more pride probably than anywhere in the county. When we had Western Reserve High School there, that's an area that has a rich history, not only of sports, of academics, of our early labors that we had. And this is a sign that neighborhood is coming back. That's what I meant by the stuff that I had there. When I quoted the pastor, those were his words that he said there on, on the stage that you were at. The quoted by Dan O'Brien in the Business Journal. He said that when he was up there. And he said that I think for a reason too. He's taking pride also that he doesn't want that area to be known for that anymore. He doesn't want that area to be known for crime. He wants that area to be known as the starting point for revitalization of all of the poor and rundown areas that the county has had. And this is a shining light that if we can do it there, we can do it anywhere in the county. So I do apologize if we took offense to it. I apologize to the mayor for misquoting him. Um, and this was, like I said, this was George Johnson that I meant to quote and I.
Yeah.
That's the quote right here than Dan O'Brien.
That was not.
Well, he.
It was paraphrased, so.
Yes, it was paraphrased.
I do, I do.
Yes, and, and then I'll sit down because the reality of the situation is there's kind of an unwritten social rule too that we, that you know, th- this is all a learning lesson. You know what I mean? You're a new commissioner, so let me give you a little bit of, of free game. This is an unwritten social rule as well. When you are a part of the community, when we see you in the community, when you're working in the community, when you doing job fairs in the community, when you're pastoring in the community, when we see you, when we see you at our little league games, when we see you, you say what you wanna say because like it's an unwritten rule. We can talk about family. Family can talk about family, but y'all can't talk about family. So we see him. So even if he did say it, he has that right. I'm gonna leave it with this because half of y'all who was over there and I understand that you have to do crowd control, but half of y'all rich folks who was over here would have never stepped foot in my neighborhood. And I got a Tesla just like y'all. Y'all would have never stepped foot in my neighborhood had it not been for a photo op. Pastor Johnson, if he said it, which he didn't really say that, he's over there, been there for, for forty years. You haven't been. Don't ever rec- don't, don't repeat it. So that's all I gotta say.
Well, I, I wanna, uh, uh, thank you for your comments. I really appreciate that you came and, and spoke up about that. Cause that was a, that was a concern of mine too. And I, and I actually did, my family is from there. The, it, it, so not everyone i- in certain races, like we had, uh, my family moved there for the steel mills too. One of them from Puerto Rico and another, and another one lived on Delaware down the road. So that's where, that's a place where we had Christmas parties and we used to grocery shop and have celebrations and go to the football games. And, and, uh, babysat and there's a lot of people and a lot of activities in that neighborhood that, and the people ca- came up from there and some of them stayed there till the day that they passed away and my family. So that, 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 that offended me as well when that was said. And that's why I wanted to, I, I'm thankful that you came in and addressed the, the chair with that comment.
Okay, next. Yes. Okay, next. Yes.
My name is Lynette Wiseman. There has been a concern. And it's been going on for quite a while. About WRTA buses being removed from downtown Warren. Now, all these traffic lights have been. Removed from Parkland Road. And different places around the city. Why can't monies? Be allocated to keep WRTA buses running in the city of Warren? They are from Youngstown too. They're not from per se Trumbull County. But they provide transportation for people going to jobs. Doctors. Stores for different things that don't have the funds personally for cars. And driver's licenses. And I have been in both places. I too. Stand up for churches through church. And. I feel that it is a great disservice to take WRTA buses out of Trumbull County. To limit our transportation. Because if there was more jobs allocated here in Trumbull County. Somewhere the funds could come through. We could have jobs here and more taxpayers here. To lessen the burden on the American taxpayers. The older we get, it seems that the taxes and everything go up. That really is not right. Where the jobs are, the people are. Where the people live, they're going to pay taxes into the. National level, the city level. And the state levels. Now. I don't know why. President. George W. Bush was let go. He was a praying president. Now, for some reason, even though I voted for Joe Biden. Why is there still a controversy between Joe Biden? And the past president? Now, if we're going to look at this thing through the eyes of God. What would he suggest? Equality among the taxpayers and the government. The government and the taxpayers through prayer in church. Now, I realize that there has been. Through on the books. Our United States government. Has been founded on Christian principles. Now, we say the pride of allegiance. That is right. We bring people in that have gone to church and have been a church. I've been part of the church of the Holy Spirit for over forty-one years. I've been on both sides. All I'm asking is that certain funds be kept here to provide transportation through WRTA. Be kept here in downtown Warren so that people can get around to hospitals, doctors' offices, stores. Because I know that they don't want on the weekends. And the more jobs we have in Trumbull County, the more people will want to come back to Trumbull County and our jobs. Packard Electric was moved out. Ohio Edison is still here, but in Illinois. All these jobs left Trumbull County, but why?
Thank you.
Does anyone want to respond?
I'd like to respond to, to this lady. There's a, there's a big misconception about WRT and the buses that are in Trump, that are in downtown Warren and how they're funding them and who controls it and who oversees it. The buses right now that you're seeing are funded through ODOT. The state of Ohio is providing a pilot program that they've done. Since the transit board was disbanded in order to give Trumbull County Board of Commissioners an opportunity to join WRTA. And then allow the voting public to decide if they wanted to fund it for, for our region to have regional transit. When I first took office and one of the primary reasons why I ran for office is because I wanted to. I wanted to give the people in Trumbull County an opportunity to vote on whether or not they wanted to join WRTA. Providing regional transit service does exactly what you were saying. It, it has so many positive impacts and one of them relates directly to economic development. So when you look at what the site selection firms um, consider for developers, the major thing that they look at is, is there or is there not public transportation? When you look at population growth and decline, which we have been experiencing shrinkage, that is one of the factors is that is not providing public transportation that is regional. It's also, it contributes in so many factors to our economy. It also increases uh. Spending and provides for short-term economic development too with, with short-term spending and then long-term with new development. So I tried about four times since I came into office to join WRTA. But Mauro Cantal Mesa and Frank Fuda both voted no all of those times that I, that I wanted to join. Now that would then allow. All of the voters to decide whether or not they want that regional transit service. And then WRTA, since they already have a set sales tax. Then, then WRTA would subsequent, subsequently place that on the ballot. For everyone in the regional district to vote on whether or not they want to share in that same cost that they, that uh, the other part of the district has. In order to provide larger services. With, if that were to happen, then it would be up for the people to decide. And I wholly believe that the people should decide that. And it wouldn't be paid for by the Trumbull County. Commissioners, it would be funded with, if you decided, it would be funded with. Tax money, sales tax, not property taxes, sales taxes. And an average spender, you know, and that's only taxable income. Doesn't include your prescriptions, your, your um, rent or anything like that. The, the cost on, for an average person might spend a thousand dollars a month on non-ti- I think I calculated before to be about thirty dollars a year. And that would provide an actual regional transit service where we would still have those, those bus lines, but we would also be able to provide. Uh, door-to-door type services and there, there's called parrot, there's called paratransit areas. And that would also deflect the, or defray the cost. Burden of the senior levy for their transportation services they provide and the department, uh, the DD board. So those entities would save money because what they're looking at right now, and I've spoke, I, I've talked. Uh, about this ad nauseam and I can't get the consensus of, of the board necessarily to move forward on this. In the future, we're going to be in a situation where property ti- the, the, here's what happens. If there's a senior services advisory.
Can you get, can you get to a point, please?
If there's. I, I gotta dispute like a hundred things here. Come on.
If there's a senior levy pa- on the ballot, because they need to be able to provide more senior rides, those pass eighty to twenty. They always pass. The Board of DD, the fair, it used to be called Fairhaven, those pass all the time, all day long. And that would cause a tremendous cost to tax to, on property value, on, on property taxes. In order to raise those and those are absolutely going to pass. So I think it's more, it's more appropriate for us to. Join as a Board of Commissioners, join WRTA, then we would be able to have input on that. It would also create economic development. Because we would have a pole, we would have a vehicle barn. We would have a vehicle barn. We would have a transit hub and all of these things would be situated in downtown. And economic development would be spurred around that as well, because those are what the plans that uh, WRTA had for Trumbull, for Trumbull County, if they wanted to do that. So. I, I still believe, and I'd like to request that it be put on our agenda uh, uh, right now that we put that on the agenda, joining WRTA.
I, I've had no education on this. I've never got a return call back from Mr. Harris or anyone at WRTA. This is all new to me. I'm, so you're, you're asking me to. Put on an agenda and vote for something that has never, ever been presented to me yet.
So uh, so anyway, I, I'd like us to reintroduce that so that, because we are going to be in a situation where people are not going to, it's already a situation where people aren't going to be able to have rides, but also. Diversely affects economic development because we, we will always have the Warren Express, the Warren Express.
And put a sales tax on the ballot.
Seven million dollar sales tax that everyone here is going to pay.
We, we have nothing to do with that. That would be up to the people of the, that.
You have everything to do with it. You cannot put it on the ballot.
We ha- I believe we have the duty to let people decide. I don't, I, I think that that's.
Township Association, when it was presented to the Township Association, let me just say this. This is, Trumbull County is, is a very diverse population. We have a city that's on a large metropolitan area, but it's larger. And in the southern part of the county, we have a lot of cities. Unfortunately, when you get up north and central to north, there's not a great deal of support for regional trans. Because it's just not there. The Township Association has voted unanimously that they don't want our WRTA. So we as commissioners can't only listen to the people or the, or the pockets of people in Warren or Niles, or we have to listen, we represent the entire county.
There are a lot of nor- but.
Can I please speak? I didn't interrupt you. The, the, there are, we have to represent the entire county. We don't even have a metropolitan area like Youngstown. Warren isn't as big as Youngstown. So it's difficult to have a regional transit authority going through. Going through Trumbull County when you don't have the population that demands it. Ma'am, I have a question for you. Are you utilizing our senior services? Cause we do offer transportation. Okay. How, does that meet your needs?
Well, I don't always have time. Now, they want a week.
Cause, cause it's unfortunately what I'm, what I'm getting at, I don't mean to interrupt, but what I'm getting at is there's this narrative out there that we're not providing transportation. We're providing seniors and disabled with transportation, our most vulnerable.
Not people who work and need to be able to s- support our economy and contribute.
We've looked at the numbers of that. That's about one percent of the, that's about one percent of the population. So you charge a seven million dollar sales tax for one percent of the population. So everybody's going to pay seven million dollars for one percent of the population. We as commissioners have to look at that.
That's not correct. That's.
If they are disabled and they are seniors, they're covered.
That's not.
No, that's not the case. Diane, will you please answer that? That's our senior levy coordinator.
Well, I want to, I want to respond to, to that. The people who.
There's a lot of misinformation. Please, let's, let's stay on topic. Diane, please explain.
Hang on, we had, it, it a public, the northern townships actually would be provide, provided the same levels of service as well. So say you live in, in Mecca or somewhere and your car breaks down or, and it's waiting for a part. From wherever, you would have the ability, if we had a re- regional transit in Trumbull County was associated with it, you'd have the ability to make sure that you are, you're scheduled for rides to and from work. Or say you have an appointment where your eyes need dilated and you can't drive or something. You'd be able to make sure that you, you, you can have rides. It's not just the, the bus lines that you see. There are other services as well. No, no, we, we do not for the general public.
No, but we could, we could. Doesn't have to be WRTA. We could do that ourselves. We could put that out for a bit also.
Here's the, here's the difference. You want to do. You want a regional transportation system for the majority of the geographic part of the county that doesn't want it. So what you need to have is a targeted, what you need to have, yes, it is true. The, the. Association voted unanimously that they didn't want it when you tried to push it on.
At a meeting, there are a couple of people, that's not the people there.
People is everybody.
No.
Okay.
This is going to require a lot more debate discussion. This is going to be a special meeting.
And let the public decide. I say that we should just join it and then let the public vote on whether or not they want transportation re- and all of Trumbull County.
I'm not going to advocate for a seven million dollar tax.
I think we need to look at that and we need to look at other options that could be on the table to provide service for everybody.
Services that we don't need.
With smaller vehicles.
So I appreciate seniors and, and disabled people making sure that we're covering their transportation. When people are looking to do economic development, they're looking for the workforce. And they want to make sure that there's transportation for the workforce and that doesn't exist. And that's a problem for training.
How's, how's that working out for Youngstown? How's that working out for Youngstown? How come their population?
How in the world did everybody get the general voters and pack it back in the day when we didn't have WRTA?
Youngstown had the ability to have a tr- a line.
It's a larger metropolitan area.
We don't even have that. Okay. It's.
Statistics are there.
Diane, do you have something to add to this?
And Lordstown, I want to get our people from Trumbull County.
I want to target transportation. You're right. I don't want a regional county-wide transportation.
Okay, you want to target it so you could make political decisions.
Where it's needed. I'm, I'm sorry, but a lot of people in Mecca and Fowler don't want transportation there. They don't, they just don't.
Buses though. It's, it's, it's different. They want to, they want the security. They, it, here's the benefit of transportation, even if they live in, in Fowler and they're, they're not riding the bus, the fact that then. There could be economic development in their county where they can actually go to a new job.
You don't even want to bring water and sewer to their township.
Where there's a, there's a, there's a, there is a job somewhere. Thanks for interrupting all the time. Where.
You've been controlling the floor for about fifteen minutes. We have our senior services levying director.
Wanted that townships would be able to benefit if there's job cre- creation as a result of that.
And there are, there are other creative ways of getting transportation people besides.
Got a seven million dollar tax.
Diane.
This was not my intention for coming today. Um, first I want to give positive news or, or um, publish about an event that we're going to have. On Friday at the Warren Library, the commissioners have been invited to what we're calling Centenarian Day. We are celebrating those who are over a hundred years old in Trumbull County. By the way, I'm Diane from the Senior Levy Administration. We have eleven known residents who are over a hundred years old. Our oldest is one hundred and five. We have three that are actually going to be in attendance at that event, uh, coffee, light refreshments. And I want to thank a volunteer from my Senior Services Advisory Council. There's eleven members. Uh, her name's Roberta Saicon. She's the one that organized this event. And we're having it at the library, the Warren Public Library. We invited the media and the three commissioners. I hope all three can be in attendance.
I, I don't know if it's on our calendar.
It is on your calendar.
I get a cancellation notice.
It's been on your calendar for about two weeks now because we've, I notified.
And I get a cancellation notice for that today, Diane. Has that been canceled?
No.
I, I get a cancellation email that says canceled Friday with the line through it.
Double check that because that's, that's definitely on, so.
There a resolution that was passed for.
We don't need a resolution. We're holding an event. Senior Services Advisory Council, eleven members, volunteers decided to hold an event for the centenarians.
I'm saying there is a resolution in the back. I, I wondered if there.
That is going to be presented at the, it's not a resolution, it's a proclamation that is being presented to those seniors who are a hundred years and older, eleven members. Onto transportation, WRTA news is news to me. I just learned this this morning because Lynette Wiseman showed up asking about. What's going on with transportation. Senior and disabled is not affected by WRTA closing their lines. We have a registration process. If you need transportation, you need be, need to be registered first. Once you are approved, you get a call that you've been approved. The very next day, you can begin to schedule your transportation directly with the companies. We give the um, applicant a flyer so they understand how to apply, how to, not how to apply, but how to use the system. And when you use the system, all they need is two days advance notice to schedule. You could schedule a week in advance. You could schedule two weeks in advance, but only two days before. They won't do same day. They won't do day before. Sometimes they will if they have the availability, if we get an emergency call. I'm not the transit administrator. I'm speaking on behalf of the transit administrator. His name is Mike Salamon. I assist with him because part of my funding helps that senior and disabled transportation. Right now, it's, it's funded by commissioners. Right now, it's, it's funded by Commissioners pay a certain portion. The developmental disability, uh, group pays a certain portion and Senior Levy pays a certain portion for senior and disabled. General population under sixty, I don't service that unless you have a disability. And it doesn't mean a walking disability. It could be any disability that your doctor says is a disability. Any questions?
Okay, so we have a resolution that says that it's in celebration.
If you want to read that, that's fine. That's the one that is being presented to the.
What I'm saying, this is a resolution. And if the board has a resolution, it has to go through our agenda. So can, was it already approved? I just want to make sure.
I don't know the rules.
Okay.
Talking about Centenarian Day.
I understand, that's great. I under, I came from that word. Lisa, Lisa, was this, was this journalized? That was there a resolution for this that was voted on?
No.
Okay, so when we vote on this, so that we can prevent, present this properly.
It's ceremonial, it's not anything to vote on, but we can if you want.
It's ceremonial, so we can.
Yes.
It's, it's the resolution, we still have to have it on our agenda, that's, that's processed, that we've always done that, so.
Make a motion, if you want to make a motion, make it.
I want to. I may, here. This person read that. Cause that's been signed already.
Resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in celebration and recognition of Trumbull County Centenarians. Whereas it was a great pleasure, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners join the residents of Trumbull County and recognize with respect and admiration the contribution of senior citizens in our community. And whereas longevity of life is a blessing for these individuals and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity and experiences these individuals bring all. And whereas Helen Price and Evelyn Fisher were born in nineteen eighteen, during that year, God Bless America was written by Irving Berlin. Uh, Ofa Mae Johnson became the first woman allowed to join the US Marine Corps. And whereas Lily Sarah White was born in nineteen nineteen, which in the same year is when the traffic light first came out with the colors red, orange and yellow, but no one could tell the difference. Whereas Al Guseba and Irene Wass were born in nineteen twenty. Harriet Taylor Upton worked closely with Susan B. Anthony to secure women's suffrage. These efforts culminated in nineteen twenty with the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, giving women the right to vote. Upton's home remains on Mahoning Avenue in Warren, Ohio. This home was an important meeting place for those involved in the lengthy suffrage struggle. And whereas Dorothy Gray, Joe Zikrasik and Marion Kaufman were born in nineteen twenty one. March fourth nineteen twenty one was the inauguration of Warren G. Harding as the twenty ninth president. The same year a pound of peanut butter is fifteen cents. And whereas June McCombs and Marion Fonty were born in nineteen twenty two. There was an all Native American NFL team from nineteen twenty two to twenty three called the O'Wrang Indians that was based out of Ohio. And whereas Leola Adams was born in nineteen twenty three, the same year Roy and Walt Disney founded the Walt Disney Company and Coca-Cola invented the six pack. And therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners believes that all centenarians have had a greatly, have greatly contributed to the betterment of Trumbull County as outstanding citizens and loyal friends. I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution, uh, for presentation.
Second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Yeah, this was signed ahead of that. There's another, there's another one I found out there along with this one.
We did that earlier in the resolution here. We devoted on that, that was number six, I believe, today.
I was accepting her retirement, but was it resolving? Let's see. Cause we can't sign, you guys are really not supposed to sign them.
Yes, we can.
Prove them.
Yeah, like, like you said, it's.
Signature doesn't matter, the signature doesn't matter until it's voted on. And sign all you want, until it's voted on, it doesn't matter.
Just sign them before you, okay.
And sign before you vote on them, yes.
Alright, so which one was it?
Todd, would you like to speak on this one? Is that what you're here for? Okay.
Okay, so this is to acknowledge it, but this one is to honor her. So I want to make a motion that the Board approves the resolution, resolution honoring Mary Lefta, Lefta Harris upon her retirement from the Trumbull County Recorder's Office.
It did number six and she had an objection to it because she didn't have the paperwork.
I didn't, that was.
From Mr. Latell.
That was accepting the retirement and this one is honoring her. And, and I just want to make sure that if we're going to present something that we, that we have it journalized correct. So that was my motion to.
Do you want me to add honoring?
Banana.
Into the motion?
No, this is just a new one.
Honor her with a resolution, second.
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
I have a copy of it.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, Mr. Latell.
Good morning, everybody. Todd Latell, Trumbull County Recorder. In case anybody missed it in the paper, we're on the news stations in the last couple of weeks. Uh, in a collaborative effort with Karen and Van Allen and the Clerk of Court's office and our probate judge in the court's Jim Frederica, uh, we're putting on a program called Good Deeds Trumbull. And how you own your assets while you're living will determine what happens to those assets when you pass away. Okay? So the purpose of, of this program is to give you the tools to A, make sure your property, your assets are going to go to who you want them to go to. And B, to save your, to save your family, your loved ones' time, money and hassle when that time eventually comes. So it's, it's going to be a program that we're putting on. Our first program is going to be, uh, September seventh at six thirty PM at Saint Demetrius Community Center. The address there is thirty, thirty-two, twenty-three Atlantic Street in Warren. Again, that's September seventh, six thirty PM. Uh, there is a lot of demand for this program. We have a lot of people that come into my office after a loved one has passed. And at that point, it's too late. It goes through the probate process at that time. So again, we're going to give people the tools to be able to take advantage of being proactive and, and help resolve some of these issues before that happens. Um, we're looking to do this on a quarterly basis. Uh, we're looking to do this program across the county. So if there's anybody out there listening in here that has locations that we can utilize, please get ahold of my office or the Clerk of Court's office or the Probate Court office. So we can plan those out ahead of time to give people enough, enough notice. And, and then the only other, so we, so we'd appreciate spreading the word and getting people there because it's something that everybody in this room, everybody listening and everybody in Trumbull County is going to have to go through at some point in their lives. Uh, and again. Yes, sir. Saint Demetrius has a pretty large, so we're, we're not sure what to expect because this is the first one. So we're gonna, it's free to the public. Uh, there's no, there's no charge. It'll be about a forty-five minute presentation with questions to follow. Um, and yeah, we're, we're just, we're not really sure what to expect for this first one. Um, but I know we'll, we're going to have is, we're hoping, we're hoping we can get a couple hundred people there, to be honest. So we'll have seating for, for that many.
Three, sir, is each program the same at different venues?
It'll be the same. I mean, I, other, you know, questions come up, can come up and, and, uh, we have a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to do. We have folders with information that we're going to give to everybody there to help them with that process. Um, but it's, it's going to be the same, but we know that everybody can't make it to Warren. Uh, and at the same time, so we want to again, try to move it around the county. Um, it's different locations, but we need help with venues in order to do that. So again, if anybody can help us with that, we'd appreciate it. Um, the only other thing I want to mention is again, uh, I appreciate the Commissioners doing the resolution for Mary Lefaris. Mary's been my chief deputy, uh, in the Recorder's Office, uh, for the past seven years plus with me. And she's retiring after thirty-two years. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, she did it the right way. Uh, very humble, loyal, made everybody around her better. Uh, and she will sorely be missed and we wish her nothing but, uh, fun and, and everything that comes with that in retirement. So I just want to thank her and, and let everybody know publicly. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Commissioners, I would like to read a statement that I did on my own time last night. These are my own personal notes.
Name, please.
Oh, Alexandra Divan-Jonsey Bush, Human Resources Director. According to the EEOC, the Commission states, the definition of harassment is when it becomes unlawful, wherein during the offensive conduct becomes a condition of continued employment or the conduct is severe or pervasive enough to create a work environment that is reason, that a reasonable person would consider intimidating, hostile or abusive. To again cite the EEOC, workplace harassment that could cross the line into creating a hostile work environment may include, but is not limited to, offensive jokes, slurs, epithets or name-calling, physical assaults or threats, intimidation, ridicule, ridicule or mockery, insults or put downs, offensive objects or pictures and interference with work performance. Insults and put downs such as political hack, myself, minions, flying monkeys, being part of the entrenchment, filthy liars and referring to staff as swamp can potentially, if repeatedly used, rise to the standard of a hostile work environment. This paired with being followed and recorded all day, even after being informed that this was making employees uncomfortable, saying an employee committed battery, going through employees' personal possessions at their desks, coming into HR office recording when the person.
That's why I record.
Do I have?
She has the floor, Commissioner.
Do I have two minutes?
She has the floor, Commissioner.
You and everyone else lies.
Do I have two minutes?
She has the floor.
Thank you. I'll raise, I'll begin again with my two minutes, thank you. Coming into the HR office, recording when the director was on a phone call with an employee dealing with personnel matters with witnesses saying that you had your ear to my door, listening is hostile and unsafe. The Commission further notes that anyone who witnesses severe and pervasive harassment has a legal right to report that a victim does not have to suffer a wrongful termination or some other type of economic injury in order to succeed within a hostile work environment lawsuit. Furthermore, our CERB recognized twenty-four ninety-three contract via Article Three, non-discrimination, which happens to also be the me too clause for administration in the county. States in Section One, the provisions of this agreement shall be applied equally to all applicants for employment and promotion as well as to all employees in the bargaining unit without discrimination as to age, sex, handicap, marital status, race, color, union or non-union status, creeds, national origin, and I want this to be stated, political opinions and affiliation that is in our contract. In closing, HR has an ethical duty to take all employees' concerns of hostility in the work environment seriously. HR as the Director of Risk Management for this county has to act accordingly to ensure and promote a safe work environment for all the employees. We need to be better and it starts from the top down. Thank you for my two minutes.
I'll respond. Yeah, of course. When you have staff, they can. I, it's, I am talking and it, it doesn't.
No, you don't have it, it's directional microphone, speaking of the microphone.
So a, as a Commissioner, when I, when I.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Hello. As a Commissioner.
You have to have in front of you, it's a directional microphone.
Just like this, that's how I talk into it.
Or at least have it in front of you somewhere.
It won't get recorded otherwise.
Yesterday, I asked staff to do basic tasks for me. I have been, they've been providing these tasks for years.
Who has been? The clerk that you forced out, the clerk that sued us for your actions. You missed her now a lot, don't you?
Enter. Interesting.
Yes. She went over and above for you.
Okay.
She didn't have to. Go ahead.
No, I, I'm. Can you be quiet?
Yeah, go ahead, you have the floor. Go ahead, you have the floor, Commissioner.
Need to.
You have the floor, Commissioner.
Yesterday, when I was here at the office, I was told last week, because last week they didn't provide me my meeting file, that I could only obtain it by coming to their open workshop. I came, I requested it and Lisa Blair refused to provide it to me. I asked for it to, I said, fine, don't copy it, just let me look at it. I will review it, it's a public document. They refused to provide a Commissioner with the commit, hard copy of the Commissioner's meeting file. That should not have happened. I have had to endure employees calling me, calling me names. Uh, it's like living the movie, The Mean Girls. I come in, I come into work, they refuse to do anything I ask. Uh, I, I've been made fun of with my, my physical appearance has been made fun of by staff. They were saying that I was dumb, refusing to get back to work. Uh, just, just making up lies about me, saying that I was going through personalized, including uh, uh, the political hire Alex, uh, Divin Gency. Uh, so she as well was present, she was, she was present whenever she, no, she was a political hire. It was, it's family, it's a friends, it's a friends and family plan. So not one day of experience, uh, in HR.
Unless you don't have friends.
So. So. I was in the offices looking for a file that they said they wouldn't give me. So I went back, if they're not going to give it to me, and I began to look on the desks. I didn't shove, shuffle through anyone's personal items, that's a.
It's on video, it's on video.
Why? I didn't go through anyone's personal items.
How do you know it was on their desk? It was in a folder, you could have gone through anything. You just assumed.
Folders, files, work things, if they're using.
People don't have personal information on their desk.
If they're using.
So people can just go rifle through your desk right now?
If people in the office are using county issued material.
You are.
Files, folders. Files and folders that are county documents or county paperwork, I have the ability to look at that.
Was it county issued?
Is this what we do?
He has a question.
And, and so the record, recording of the meetings.
She, she's one of the people that pay your salary, she's a taxpayer apparently.
And, and they need to be identified in order for the, the meetings to count, the minutes, so that.
You can, if you like, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
I think it's, I, I, you know, the reason for the, it's unfortunate because more people in the community have asked, why can't I do anything? And I just want to say this to, to everyone. People say, why are they not fired? Why are they not disciplined? Why are they not, why are they still?
There's three or four people to tell you that might ask that.
It, it's. It's, it, this is not okay. It's, you're not. This is not okay. This is not okay.
Ma'am, can you, can you please, let's do it the proper way, so she doesn't have anything. Your name and where you're from and you can have the microphone.
I am no one and I am from Warren Township. And whereas I prefer to do things from a place of love and kindness and respect. The one thing that I'm really good at is standing up when I see other people getting bullied. And what I am so bothered by is that you have elderly and disabled people who cannot speak for themselves, who cannot represent themselves, who don't have transportation. And the money that you're wasting on lawsuit could easily go to them. But instead, we're sitting here listening to you abstain or vote no.
I never voted for.
Your buttocks were not kissed properly in the presentation of paperwork. It is nobody's job to call you up and remind you to bring your laptop to work to print out the paperwork. It is nobody's job to present you like a golden ticket. Hey, here's what we're doing. I want to know what we're paying you for. What exactly is it that you do do other than cause conflict and strife and waste our tax dollars? Please tell me one thing because you love to hear yourself talk. Even when you vote yes on something, you want to tell everybody, well, you know what? Hey, this was done wrong before I got here. These people know nothing. I have so much experience in my contracts and my business, this. How long, what is the longest period you've kept a job? Cause I'm going to say, based upon your personality and performance, it's not very long, is it? You sit here and you criticize people publicly about personal information. You scream words like gaslighting while you're gaslighting them. I highly recommend you read a few more psychology books and take a look at the triangulation that you. that you create with your narcissistic personality disorder. Pretty much, it's all I've got to say. Do better because there are people that actually need those dollars that you're wasting. And as you're sitting up here running your stock, you're creating new lawsuits every single time. I've counted four since I've been here. And the first thing you told me to do as everybody in the audience was chatting was to shut up. Is that professional? Cause I'm pretty sure if I were an employee, I could file suit against you for that, right? You show zero self-control. No, please respond. I'm waiting.
No, I just want, I want you to be done because you've been interrupting the entire meeting.
Have I been interrupting? What? Define interruption. Is it only the people that get paid to be here that are allowed to cut people off or say something when it's not their turn? Do you want to get up and run away? It's typically what you do. It's about that time. No? Tell me how I've been insulted you personally. Tell me how anything that I've said is something other than that you have done.
Your time, your time is up, ma'am. Unfortunately, your time is up.
Hi, my name is Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I found it very disturbing that Ms. Frenchco couldn't come into the workshop yesterday and actually participate, but showed up and demanded that the secretary stop what she was doing in the meeting to go attend to Ms. Frenchco. And then when Ms. Frenchco realized that there was a young lady in the back unattended, because we were all out here. She went in the back and she cornered that young girl. And she intimidated her and she interrogated her. She harassed her. She bullied her and she threatened her. I seen the footage. It's disgusting what this woman's getting away with. What are we doing here? Vote her out next year. And you know, Ms. French, I don't know why you won't attend the workshops on Tuesday. Uh, the Tribune did an editorial. They thought you should attend them. Uh, there was a poll done where ninety eight percent, I believe, did it, thought you should attend them. And so all I can say, Ms. French goes, I hope that I see you next Tuesday at the workshops. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Glenn.
Morning, Mr. Glenn from Niles. Uh, there was a situation last night with a domestic call. And two of the people that were involved in the crash were personal friends of mine. They're both okay. One is a county employee. They're both okay. They were taken to the hospital and checked out. I don't know who the individual was, but several departments were called in on this hostage situation. And the people that hit, the friends of mine were federal agents, US Marshals. Now, I tried to think between where the location was, there was probably six departments that could have properly responded. There was people on my ring saying that they were in Mineral Ridge and SWAT teams were flying down the road. Now, I, I just thank God that these two friends of mine weren't killed. Um, but I would hope that the departments like our sheriff, Niles, Howland, Weathersfield, and, and, and my friend said that he saw units there from Brookfield, Coatesville. They brought in a mobile command unit, two SWAT teams, federal agents in unmarked SUVs that hit my friend. I understand it was a hostage situation and they breached and the individual shot at them when they breached. But I can't even fathom the lives that were in the way. And I hope that they would take this as a training session and try to reach out to the corresponding units before bringing in the army. Thank you.
Attorney Goodman?
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. I'll be brief.
Name, sir, too, for the record.
Jeffrey Goodman. And I, I have three things that I want to touch on, um, yeah, very quickly. Uh, the first involves, um, a topic that apparently came up at, at last week's commissioners meeting involving some spreadsheets and the origin of the spreadsheets and, uh, in the course of that happening, an employee of, uh, our office was, was singled out by name. Um, I believe inappropriately and, and, uh, inaccurately, and I wanted to clear that up. The, the spreadsheets that I'm talking about are spreadsheets that were created regarding the ARP funds. I think you guys are all aware of the spreadsheets that I'm talking about. Those spreadsheets were originally created by Attorney Tanya Rogers at Baker Dublucar. Uh, they came from Baker Dublucar to the commissioner's office. The Trumbull County Engineer received those spreadsheets from the commissioner's office with a request to review and provide input. Um, that happened, uh, without getting overly technical, these are sent as, um, read only documents, read only workbooks. Um, because of the nature of the spreadsheets. And when they are re-saved, the, uh, person who re-saves it becomes the creator on the, uh, information that's attached to that spreadsheet. And so when it was emailed back to the commissioners after uh, the input on the projects that affect the Trumbull County Engineer, it showed rightly, an engineer's employee's name, the secretary in the office, who was just handling the emails coming back and forth.
Who sent the sheet to her initially?
It came from the commissioners.
Which commissioner? Cause it was created by somebody.
Well, okay, okay. I, I don't know. I know it came from the commissioner's office.
Went from commissioners to the county engineers' office for some reason.
Commissioner's email. Now, if things are going in and out of the commissioner's office on your official email and the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, that's on you, not on us, right? Um, our staff is going to respond cooperatively to any county commissioner that makes a request for input or information on projects involving the county engineer. Commissioner Malloy, if you send something over and say, hey, I want you guys to look at this. These projects affect you. Our staff is instructed and they will be absolutely cooperative, provide that input and send it back. They'll do the same for Commissioner Frenchco. They'll do the same for Commissioner Cantala Mesa. I don't think that any of the commissioners would ask anything else or anything different from any other department head, elected official or employee of Trumbull County. Am I correct?
Well, I, I would have to disagree in the sense that it was a blank form. So why would we, why would Commissioner French go send a blank form to the county engineers' office?
It was, it was not a blank form and maybe you just don't understand the technology.
I saw, I saw on the back and from our IT department, it said created by that employee, modified by Commissioner Frenchco.
Well, you don't.
That came from our IT department.
And you, not surprisingly, Commissioner, you don't have all the information and you don't understand the technology.
But you have to understand.
And the point is, if you want to argue about this, and I've offered this in a very diplomatic way. But if you want to argue about it, the bottom line is you have an IT department that can explain it to you. You should talk to them and you should get your information correct before you call out employees by name inappropriately. You know, Commissioner Cantala Mesa made a comment earlier in this meeting about inviting lawsuits by saying things in a meeting. And that's what you are doing when you irresponsibly do things like that. Don't do it. You folks have paid out somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars that we know of already because of lawsuits. Change your behavior. Pay attention. Did you, were you, are you wasting everyone's time when you have Todd Johnson come up here and give a prayer talking about communication and responsibility and cooperation? Because right after he did that, everyone in this room ignored it. Pay attention to what's being said in your own meetings and act accordingly. Get the information and then act responsibly.
I want to.
The next thing I want to talk about is educational highway. The legal status of that road is a problem. It was brought to the attention of the commissioners back in two thousand fourteen. In September of two thousand twenty one, there was a po- proposed medical facility, a five hundred plus million dollar project that was proposed in Champion Township. The people putting that project forward identified the problems with educational highway. Uh, the commissioners were again approached regarding the need to correct the problem with that parcel. Nothing was done. We lost the project. In March of two thousand twenty three, another letter was sent to the commissioners, I think directly to you, Commissioner Malloy. Um, saying we need to take action on educational highway.
Nothing's ever been addressed to me regarding that. I had one phone call with our county engineer before I took office. And that was in regards to the hospital that was shut down before I was elected, before the new commissioner.
Again, your statement is ac- absolutely inaccurate. You were sent a letter from the county engineer on March second, twenty twenty three. It was addressed to the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, Attention Commissioner Denny Malloy, Chairman. And that was also, and that was sent to you via regular mail and it was also emailed to you on Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty three at eleven forty three PM. The bottom line is the prosecutor's office, the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, your statutory legal counsel has repeatedly advised the commissioners that a statutory dedication and acceptance of educational highway will cure the defects with this parcel. Let's not lose another project because of the commissioners' failure to act. And I'm, Commissioner Malloy, I'm not pointing directly at you. You are the guy that got the last letter. This has been going on since two thousand fourteen. You guys need to look at this, look at the advice that your lawyer has given you and act on this matter so that the problem can be solved. Finally, the last thing I, uh, wanted to address is the roof at the Cortland facility of the uh, county engineer's office. It is now completely unstable and dangerous. Uh, it's leaking and needs addressed immediately. Uh, the first communication with the county from the engineer's office pointing out this problem and the, the dire nature of the situation was February nine, two thousand eighteen. Subsequent communications, February twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, January thirty first, two thousand nineteen, August twenty first, two thousand nineteen, December first, twenty twenty, March eighteen, twenty twenty one, October nineteen, twenty twenty two, January four, twenty twenty three, April fourteen, twenty twenty three, April nineteen, twenty twenty three, April twenty seven, twenty twenty three, March nine, twenty twenty three. Five years, over five years of, hey, this roof is leaking. It's dangerous. It needs replaced. We now have a building that A is in such bad, uh, shape that it, it's absolutely unusable for anything until the repairs are made. B, had the problem been addressed back in two thousand eighteen, the cost of the repair would be substantially less, both because of the nature of the work that needs done, the cost of the materials back then versus now, and the fact that the insurance policy that the county has is factoring depreciation into what they're going to pay. And you've added an additional, not just five years of depreciation on a roof, but five years of, of depreciation on a leaking roof and facility that's suffering exponentially increased damage because of the condition of the facility. This is inexcusable. It's a tremendous waste of money. Nonetheless, the county does have the money and does have the ability to address the problem. Uh, the problem needs to be addressed. This is, and Commissioner Malloy, I know that you campaigned on concern for the northern townships. Um, this affects the northern townships. This is the Cortland facility. This is where we get the, the salt and, and uses the base of operations to get those roads plowed and salted and made safe in the winter time. This is going to have a direct impact on, on your constituents in those townships. And this needs to be addressed now.
Now, if you're telling me we can't plow the northern townships because a roof collapsed on a building?
I'm not telling you that at all.
Okay.
I'm not telling you that at all.
I didn't know.
I'm telling you that.
Of the service.
I'm, I'm telling you that it affects the timeliness. It, it affects the efficiency of the operation. And sometimes, especially when we're talking about things like emergency services, you know, minutes matter, hours matter.
And have you heard in the last couple of meetings and workshops where we're working with auditor Yoder to acquire the funds so we can do exactly that?
Actually, I'm.
Well, and, and.
I made a motion to use ARPA money to get it done more quickly. And it died for a lack of a second.
Right. We have a, we have a hole in our money right now.
And, and frankly, how you get it done? That, that's not our concern. We're, we're not here to have that.
We all want it done. We asked what the quickest way was. The auditor told us we're on the crooked route.
Yeah, this, this is a public forum. My goal here is to just say, this is a situation that is, you know, is critical. This is a, a facility, a county facility that, yeah, it, this problem needs to be addressed. We need to be moving forward on it. There needs to be, you know, architectural and engineering, um, plans and studies done so that when the claim, and I know that a claim is, is pending and there's ostensibly been, yeah, delays with the insurance adjuster that, you know, don't make a lot of sense to me, but that's, that's what we're being told. But, you know, that is not an excuse for not moving forward on the other things that need to be done as a predicate to getting that facility up and running. And I just wanted to emphasize that. Again, not here to argue any points, but.
Can I ask you a question?
That taken care of. Absolutely.
Since you are legal counsel with the engineers.
I am not.
You're not legal. You don't work for the county engineer. You don't have subcontract. You're.
I am, I'm the personnel consultant with the county engineer. I'm not legal counsel.
Legal consultant.
Legal counsel for the county engineer is the Trumbull County Prosecutor.
Okay. Well, you, you, all right, then personnel, this works good then. I get a call the other day from Warren Township. I've had conversations the last couple of days, including today with the township trustee. We had an incident, uh, with our county engineers building a road on Anderson Anthony and Eagle Creek. Um, they had an incident with a resident there, uh, where the police had to get involved. And one of the engineers, employees and the gentleman are both being investigated from what was told to me by Randy Smith yesterday. And they thought they halted progress. They have a, a couple hundred yards of road left and half a lane. I received a call from the superintendent of, um, Le Bre schools. Said it's an unsafe environment for school buses because the buses have to straddle the lane. Uh, when I talked to the county engineer yesterday, he said he's not putting his guys back there to the legal ramifications are done with this regarding the incident. I talked to the township trustee today. He said they had a meeting amongst the trustees and offered that they would provide any police service and any additional cost overruns to get this done for the safety of the kids. And they have not received a call back from the engineer yet regarding that. Is there any way we publicly can move this process forward so we can get this road done, make the road safe again? So we don't have complaints from the school board superintendent regarding his buses anymore?
Sure, I'm, I am familiar with that situation. I'm, I'm also familiar with the communication uh, that you have kind of inaccurately described that happened yesterday. I believe that what the county engineer told you that is that we are all on the same team here. We all want to get this completed.
That's right.
But we have to be concerned, uh, with the safety of county employees. And I'm sure that you as well are concerned with the safety of county employees.
And I offered to make a motion to him to get sheriff's staff, but he's there if he can complete the job.
Well.
And he said, not until he hears the, the legal stuff is done.
Okay, so, so let, let me address, let me address what you've, what you've said in, in systematic fashion because I and I think I recall everything that you've said, but first of all, you said an incident where the police had to become involved. And nothing could be further from the truth because the primary problem with that incident is, was the police department's failure to get involved. I believe initially the sheriff's department was called out. What, what happened was we have a road crew working on Anderson Anthony Road. And a person who is a property owner out there, not a resident of Warren Township, but a property owner attacked and assaulted, uh, the road crew. He was upset about where they had parked the trucks or something like that. He's right in their face. Um, I think you would agree to me that it is, uh, sometimes off putting. Um, I think you would agree to me that it is uh, sometimes off putting for someone to get right in your face with a cell phone, wouldn't you? Okay, that's what this guy was doing. And, and you don't like that, do you?
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, yeah. Um, and that's what this guy was doing, to the point where he was spitting on the employee. He then made a threat to kill the employee. Um, you know, along the lines of, I, you know, I ought to kill you. This is a person with a violent history. I'm sure you've already looked up his record uh, in the Warren Municipal Court.
I did not.
Um, you know, multiple charges of offenses of violence and menacing, and that's what we have here, is violent, aggressive behavior and menacing toward county employees that are just out there doing their job, working on the road. The sheriff's office was called out. The sheriff you took a look at it and said, you know, this isn't really my jurisdiction. This is Warren Township's jurisdiction, so I'm pulling off. We then, uh, I, when I learned of the situation, this was on August third that I learned of the situation. I immediately call uh, Chief Harold, the police chief out in um, Warren Township and said, hey, give me a call back. We've got this situation. This, this person's obstructing our ability to do the work. Threatening the employees, spit on the one we had to send him for medical testing to make sure that, you know, everything was okay there. It is. We've got the union uh, taking the position that, you know, what's going on? How are we protecting our, our workers out here? Uh, I never hear back from Chief Harold. Zero, bupkis, nothing, not even a hey, I'm not going to do anything about it. We, we get nothing but crickets out of the Warren Township Police Department. Um, we then take the matter down to the Warren City Prosecutor's Office, which has jurisdiction over matters in Warren Township. Like, listen, we gotta do something here. We need to ensure the safety of our employees. All we're really looking for is, you know, some kind of no contact or something like that. You know, get this guy to back off. We started looking into it a little bit. We find out, you know, this guy's got all kinds of uh, you know, social media posts where he's, you know, campaigning for an employee of the Warren City Prosecutor's Office and and it turns out he's related to, I think, the athletic director out at the school that, uh, yeah, yeah, see, and that's the thing. You guys don't know the backstory here. So we got this guy with, you know, so yeah, you're getting a call from somebody over at the school, the school superintendent. Guess why? Because you got a family relationship there and they're.
I won't go as far as they accuse the superintendent of the school of.
I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just, I'm just saying, these are the facts. Go ahead and connect the dots yourself. You brought you, hang on, you brought it up. So, you know, I'm, I'm laying it out for you. So now we get let me, let me go. I'm completely capable of covering this.
I'm just saying, what does this have to do with us completing and finishing the job for the residents?
Well, so here's where we're at. So I got a union saying, hey, we need some assurances that our, our employees, our, our workers are going to be protected out here. We, as a county department, are like, we, we need our employees to be safe out there working on the road. I've got a uh, police department that hasn't taken any action. I've got a law department in the city of Warren that has not taken any action. And, and although our employees have, have been down there, they've interviewed with the prosecutors. Um, they've uh, you know, filed the reports, we've provided, you know, the, the obstruction of uh, county business alone that this individual caused is, has resulted in a couple of thousand dollars worth of expense. Uh, we've presented that to the law department. And again, we get crickets. We get nothing. Uh, we talked to attorney Ganeri and he indicated that it was the law director's call and, you know, he would he would do whatever the law director told him to do. So far, that's nothing. So that's where the matter stands now. I'm with you. And so to echo what I believe Engineer Smith said to you yesterday, we are both on the same team here. We want to finish that road. We've got the appropriate signage up and everything for the condition that it's in right now. We want to finish that road. We want to get this project done. We want to get it done before the temperature drops and we can't finish the project. How do we move this forward and ensure that our employees are safe and that this individual whose conduct thus far has gone completely unchecked isn't allowed to run rampant and, and terrorize our employees? Again, a subject that I know you hits, it's close to your heart. So, you know, we want to protect our employees. You know, I'm coming, I'm, I'm singing out of the same hymnal as, as you are and.
I would just, I would just ask that your office reach out to the trustees. They said that the gentleman changed title on that property as of Friday. He doesn't own that property anymore, so he has no right to be there anymore. The trustees did a resolution or did a special meeting last night that said, we will pay any cost overruns caused by this. We need to ensure the safety of the students getting to school. We'll provide police protection, whatever the cost is to make sure that the workers are safe. That was what was told to me. So if you could pass that on and we can work an agreement here, then we can finish the road and move on to the next.
And absolutely, it's, it sounds like, you know, people are, are taking steps to work around this problem, but it's, it's been a series of, you know, hurdles and stonewalling up until this point. I don't understand it. I'm not making any accusations against anybody on that, but that's the situation with Anderson Anthony Road. These are the kind of things we have to deal with.
Correct.
So I wanted to respond. Unless anyone else does. Okay, related to the, the first item that you brought up, the um, the spreadsheet, I believe I sent because it was a period of time when I didn't have a laptop, only the, my cell phone, and I got a couple of spreadsheets and I forwarded them to make sure that the, the projects that the engineer had on behalf of the townships were included. So that does, that does make sense because then whenever I got it, I edited it and added all those and changed the titles and added columns. So thank you for bringing that up because last week they were trying to make it appear as if me and um, someone in the engineer's office was doing something that was unpoached, so I appreciate that.
No, you said it was a form that you created with your daughter and it showed on there the creator of the form was this employee. That's why I called it out.
And the original, not to jump back and rehash all that, but the original creator of the form was attorney Tanya Rogers at Baker Dublakar, who is working on uh, for the county on those A R P.
Consolidated to develop all of those different categories that I wanted to see in one location so that it could be more presentable to the public and we can search by certain columns. So then uh, as far as the educational highway goes, uh, I found out about that matter. It, I think it was like in February of twenty two, maybe? Um, I think it was February twenty two and we had a meeting. That's when I called a meeting because I wanted to make sure we're moving forward. I made a proposition to obtain legal counsel that both specialized in real estate and in joint economic development districts because I thought that would have been a good thing uh, in that area because it appeared that the a developer had already been dealing with the Warren City and I didn't want to see a big annexation fiasco over in Champion Township. So when I made that motion to do that, it was overruled by um, Frank and, and Morrow at the time. And then ultimately they obtained um, Tom Wilson, I think it was as legal counsel for that. I have no idea what he's doing. And obviously, as you can see in meetings, if I can't get uh, an employee to allow me to review a file, I'm not able to uh.
He sent bills over that you paid.
That being, to get that moving forward. And I agree that it's important. I do want to say that I did run into um, someone on behalf of the hospital and they said that it's on hold right now due to financial matters. It's on pause was the term that he, he'd used. But I still would like to urge the board to um, make sure that we're moving forward on that. And I'd be happy to talk to him about that because if that could be cured so easily, it's unheard of to just keep an attorney on, on the on the line for all this time when it could be done with a, a quick um.
Well, he's sending over bills to the commissioners too that you paid.
So um, then the final thing that you mentioned related to, what did I write the note? Educational highway and the roof. The roof was something that I, I, I would like to know also. I believe that when you were originally, your office, not you, was originally sending those requests over, we had Jim Misaki as the point person. So everything that would come over was going to him and I didn't become aware of those. Uh, until I believe it was la- last year when I, uh, when Mr. Hart came to me and I wanted to make sure that it was moving, moving forward because I.
So all those notices didn't, weren't sent to you from the highway engineer's office?
No, what I'm saying is I have been making an effort to get those things done, but how, but we've had a person in the commissioner's office who was denying the ability of us to move forward on projects to Mr. Hart. Uh, even as it related to the HVAC. So without him here and without having, you know, a cohesive board or an administrator to make appropriate decisions, I think that that's, that's difficult. I, I, I would have liked, as I stated and made motions for, for the last few years to um, have our buildings graded so that we can have uh, all of the major elements identified. When was the last improvement? When was the um, what's the life expectancy so that we can plan and do preventative maintenance because of school, if school districts and other smaller political subdivisions that do things right have preventative maintenance planning, I believe that the county should have that too. And I was also concerned about the delay by waiting for um, some type of an insurance provider to come out and do an evaluation. And I don't think that the board understood what depreciation is. And, 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 and when a, the, the roof is that old, I already knew and I said, there's no reason that's not going to be covered by insurance because of the age of the, the, the roof and it not being improved, there's not going to be a drop in the bucket relative to that. And I believe that was the outcome, was a very miniscule amount that was going to be done. I'd like to get this done as quickly as possible. Uh, again, I'd like to ask the board if we could use, if we could use the ARPA money so that we can get it done more quickly. That is, that is something that we should be using that funding for, especially given.
That might be more quick.
A, a, especially given the fact that we've had such, we've had no preventative maintenance and buildings are buildings, buildings, there's no preventative maintenance plan, that you, people have been, trades have.
Capital improvement plans, you know, come to the budget hearings.
Trades have been lied to and told that there is.
Trades have been lied to.
And told that there is a grade, that all the buildings were graded and they were not. I even requested a copy of it from Misaki and it didn't exist. So that's, 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 that.
Well, you had, you had.
And the other thing that I wanted to ask you, I'd sent over, and I know that our legal counsel for the county requested and, and obtained actually Lisa Blair's um, background about the investigations and things that happened over there, just in order if we, if we ended up going to trial to, you know, obviously this, this, this credit based on those things, I.
Could be discussed in executive session.
This is a personnel issue.
So I, that's why we're, that's why we're exposed to so many losses.
Court with.
Ended through the, on the floor.
Follow up with my public records request. I requested her personnel files that includes all the investigations that were conducted on her at the engineer's office. Is that forthcoming?
I, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
To that.
First of all, let me, let me just say one thing. You, you're talking about, um, you know, you, you were aware of this all along. You knew the roof was bad. At, one commissioner can put anything on the agenda. There was never one agenda item that you presented here to replace that roof, never once. Not once. Second of all, I, I, I mean.
Okay.
Was there, Commissioner? And can you give me the date?
We were supposed to, even if it was a commissioner's office project, the commissioners were supposed to be the ones going through the, the same process and we, that every other entity was doing. It was supposed to be submitted because it was a building and maintenance issue. It should have been presented by.
It was presented at the budget hearings. We did over three million dollars in the past three years. Three million dollars in building improvements. And it just so happens that this building is the last of it. We've infused A R P money into all these different things, new roofs, new HVAC.
Fall apart. We can't wait until.
We gotta wait till we have money, Commissioner.
There's been money here.
What's the next one that's gonna fall apart, Commissioner? Do you know that? Since you apparently thought. Easy to throw other boards under the bus and say they had money then. They did not have money. You weren't here. You don't know the crisis de jour that was.
The financial, how good the.
It is good.
Yeah, okay. So we're demolishing the Ween Building just to, for an example of how good our.
Those are the sins of the past of thirty years ago.
Of how long?
Thirty years ago.
Oh.
We didn't, this board had nothing to do with running that, running that building down. Nothing. It wasn't even, it, it wasn't even occupied when I got here.
Okay.
Get your facts straight.
I'm still waiting to see if there's actually a, a, a grading of the building, which we found out from Misaki that it.
So who do you want to grade the buildings?
I put it on the agenda to have it done by our um, building department.
Who's our?
Our, the county commissioners has a building department. And once he retires, there's not going to be any historic knowledge of that. That's why it's.
Is that correct? Can you, can you address that? We have him here. We might as well have him speak.
All right. Well, I, I think.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Goodman has done this. Has been delightful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I am reiterating my public records request though to Mr. Goodman.
The question was um, where, where, where we're at with everything. I mean, as far as.
What projects that we have left?
Yes, yes. And, and go over some of the, some of the highlights so that we, there, there's.
Question. My question was building grading. It's not been done yet. I know that.
Building great, we, we've, we've talked about the improvements we've made in the past three years that have been unprecedented in thirty years.
There's too many to count, but when I took over, I mean, we have new bipolarizations in all their buildings, so we have our clean our space. We have a new chiller that just went in, new hot water face, projects are going at the courthouse, family court, new generator, transfer switch. Nine one one, get a brand new generator. It's on hold right now for future purposes. Uh, we have, uh, where am I at?
Family court, family court.
Engineer's office, who has entire upgrade electrical windows and P tech type units like a hotel. So they have their own individual heat and air.
Are all the needs listed? Are all the needs listed somewhere by categorically by, by bill?
Know the needs.
By, yes, by building.
I'm working on the needs and I'm trying to get the wants so I can get it done.
Are, are they listed somewhere in a fashion where we can see how, what's the life expectancy of each system and?
Like I said, I said this to you before, Commissioner, I can't tell you when a motor is going to go bad.
But it is.
I can't predict.
But you can say when it was last maintained and the age.
We maintain it on a day, on a monthly basis.
Where is it? Okay, but where is the document?
Okay.
Is there a document that shows?
My, my, my people go around and, okay, why do they have to write it down? They, they grease things on a monthly basis. They oil things on, they change filters on a bi, a bimonthly basis.
Why do they have to write it down?
Again, we do this. That's what we do.
I don't know. You suggest we start fixing things before they're broke? Is that what you want to? She said that before. You want to fix things before they're broke?
Yeah.
That's practical.
Guys are busier than busy.
Tell me how much money the county would have saved if they would have fixed the air conditioning unit in two thousand twenty before I got here.
Came in here when that happened, so I couldn't tell you that.
I know that you were still working here though.
Not taking into account of the, all those years that it was working and you would have, you would have done away with it. You'd have paid millions of dollars to upgrade something that was still working. You're not taking that into account.
Broken and ended up costing a few.
We get the most life out of our assets and we should be doing that as county employees.
Causes more, it causes more damage. It causes, I'm going to correct you. It causes, it causes, it causes more damage when you don't fix something when it needs fixed, such as the roof over there. And then now you have the ceiling.
Roof that's over there, you're saying, was the better of the three that are there? And it ripped, it stretched. I can predict when it's going to rip and stretch.
But you.
But we should, we should fix it before it does.
The highway engineers roof, Commissioner, the highway engineer, Commissioner, the highway engineers roof, if it wasn't for Mother Nature, they'd be in that building. Or the nature sucked the roof off the, off the building. But now you have coal tar on that building, which the inspector from Corsa, the engineering inspector showed up. You can't mend this roof together. It needs replaced. So therefore I started the process.
You wait until things are broken, we can be planning. And that's what I really would like to see is that.
Mother Nature either.
Do, do you not remember the budget hearings when he brings a list of capital improvement projects?
A plan.
Do you not remember that? Let's, let's produce that because it's every year. We have capital improvement projects that we tackle every year.
Why aren't the buildings graded? Why isn't there a list of how old the?
I gave nine one one an F last year. What happened?
And you don't want to give them a new building.
Right here and say nine one one is an F. Where do you want to start?
And where do you want to pay for it? Which fund? Do we want to wait for it to fall in or what are we going to do?
The porch is falling off.
You knew it was an F. You acted on nothing.
I have that. I, is there, is there a, there's nothing. All you guys do is, is verbalize things whenever it's a problem. They have. And then there's no documentation and then whenever someone leaves.
They have a stick fired boiler that still has the sticks in it that they converted to gas heat. They have a stick fired boiler that still has the sticks in it that they converted to gas heat. The sticks are still in the boiler.
But she thinks we should stay in there. Actually, she said it was a good building, structurally good building.
Heard that, yes. So it's okay. But I mean, I give it an F. I could go on and on, but I don't wanna stir up the pot.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's move on.
Let me explain preventative maintenance.
Let's, let's move on. Anyone else have anything?
Please don't.
This isn't school time. Yes, sir, Mr. Plant.
People have been here a long time.
I am going to explain something in response and, and a very simple.
We're gonna move on to the next person.
There's two commissioners saying to move on. Please, let's move on.
And we're moving on. Yes, sir.
I get to.
This, how you do this? Name and where you're from, sir.
My name's Robert Plant. I'm a resident of Trumbull County and Warren City. I'm a retired city employee. I served on the records commission for the city of Warren for twenty four years as the chairman. I'd like to ask Mrs. Yoder if she's still here. When you send an email to anyone, do you require a read receipt? If not, why not? I understand that. But my question is, if it's not included, why not? We're going through this every meeting, every meeting. I didn't get it. I didn't get the email. I didn't read the email. We need some kind of proof that it's sent. And.
He's on the floor right now. We're in the middle of his time.
Just go. Just go.
Okay, I'll cut it short. Before you leave, I have a question for you. Are you familiar with yellow book? You're not gonna answer me? Okay, the yellow book is put out by the records commission of the state of Ohio and the attorney general's office.
Can we take a pause? She has to use the restroom. We'll come back to you when she comes back. Stop your time.
I'll wait.
Thank you.
Oh, does my first amendment right have a time limit on it? Or do I get to go beyond to three minutes?
We'll give you, we'll give you plenty of time.
General question, just since we're.
Yes.
So she, she had mentioned something about a personnel issue. And requesting information about personnel information for somebody that I'm assuming there's a lawsuit with. I can only assume, I don't know. Isn't that her weaponizing her position? To go through somebody's personnel? That would be like if I worked at child support. And I was in a lawsuit with her and then I went through the document of her children's fathers and the. Incidents that happened there and use that towards my lawsuit. Is that legal? That a weaponization of her position?
Can you answer that?
Love to address her as well.
Though, wait, you can wait then. We'll, we'll do that. We'll save that for when she comes back. Uh, let's, let's save it. Let's save it until she comes back and.
Okay.
But Mr. Not yet.
That's what I was just gonna say. Okay.
And facts, because I only speak in facts, so. I like your facts. Thank you. I appreciate that. I am a top keeper.
Okay, sir, we'll resume with you, sir.
So to continue, my question was, are you familiar with the yellow book? The book that's put out by the Ohio Records Commission and the Attorney General's Office that spells out the rules and regulations for records. So my question to you, okay, I heard you say a little bit ago to Attorney Goodman. That you were reiterating.
He's, he's good. He's good. Okay.
Oh yeah, that's, that's important.
Go ahead.
That you were reiterating your records request to Attorney Goodman. So at this point, I will reiterate my records request to you, which I submitted last Friday. And over the past two years, all of the records requests that you have ignored. Okay, the deputies, please pay attention. I'm not threatening anyone here, okay? Not my intention, okay? We're coming for your position, Ms. Frenchco.
Auditor Yoder.
Whether she, whether she never know, we still have a record that we've sent back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I wanna make a, a comment and that is that uh. That is that. Where the Board of Commissioners has a custodian of records. And we are not the custodians of the records. The records request, I just as a general policy. Go to the Board of Commissioners and the custodian of the records is the one who responds to them. So just letting.
Even if the record is on your personal phone?
Yeah, now they're asking for your records, your correspondences.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think the custodian of records can go through your phone. The clerk. But tha- that's for the commissioners' general emails. Our personal emails, they can't be.
And but those are matter of public record.
Yes.
They are and, and I give full access to anyone in the county and, and most communities, they. Will work, they will, most communities, they coordinate with the custodian of records, their legal department. And the IT department to fulfill the records request. I mean, uh, Trumbull County is a little backwards as they are in many other things and that's how uh that should be conducted. So alls I can say is that it's not the responsibility of the person. It's the responsibility of the custodian of records to obtain that.
Just for the record, you've tried to fulfill these requests?
The custodian.
So you don't have to fulfill any of the.
Records?
Let someone else try to get them from you to give them to him.
Yes, I have tried to.
On your records request.
I, I have forwarded it, yeah, the.
I'd like to see those records.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to request copies of that also.
There are some people in the community. I'd like to make a motion from the floor right now that uh our, our. Room, I, I know you guys will disagree with this, but there are people who have um whose parents have warned me about. Uh them ha- having violent conduct that who are lingering around at the meetings afterwards and I.
There's two deputies here.
That's, why is this funny? I don't understand why it's funny to people in the, in the public.
Are you still scared based upon something that's somebody?
Has already had over, over two minutes. Okay. I, I would like to make sure.
I mean, is there anyone in particular?
Okay, if our, if our, if our room is not clear, then I just wanna make sure that this, this is closed off.
A public building. It's a public building. You're going through people's desks, but you want the privacy for yourself.
Public, it is a public building and then when a meeting is over, when a meeting is over, the meeting is over. We don't.
People can't stay around. This is a public building, not your building. It's owned by the taxpayers.
Last week, she, she called Warren City. She called the deputies on me. She said this was her workspace. I, I said.
Not true.
You have a private office that I respect the boundaries to that. She acted like she didn't know me. You, hey, you, you, you can leave now. The meeting's over. I said, I'm in, I'm in the people's room. You have an office, go there if you wanna conduct. An interview or your Facebook. This room here is for everybody that's here.
Okay, it's no different than a judge's chamber or judge's court or some, that we're Board of Commissioners is official for.
Not even the same.
The same.
Not even the same.
To Warren, if you would same go to a, a, a Warren uh city council meeting after the meeting is over, everyone has to leave. Uh and.
No, they don't. That's not true.
I, I wouldn't agree to that.
That's not true. There's discussion after the meeting.
Sure, there is, but within a few minutes.
When the hours of this morning are open, it's the people's building from open to closed.
You're just creating a narrative that's untrue, unfortunately.
No, it's all, it's all.
Anybody else for a greater good?
It's scary.
Yep.
About the request and how that um. Weaponizing her position or making those requests of personnel documentation for.
Yes, and Alexandra, you had an answer for that?
I am aware that the public records.
Name again, please.
Alexandra Divagenczi Bush, Human Resources Director. I am aware uh that public records have been requested for somebody's personnel file. I have to state for the record that of course personnel files are public record. There are certain things however that are to be redacted before those public records are released. And I wanna state for here, for the last time, hopefully to this board, that, well, specifically Commissioner Frenchco. Do you understand that we still have pending litigation pertaining to the case that you keep bringing up? I wanna hear you say it on the record. Do you understand that?
It's the county's money. It's not her money.
Either way. So I, I would like to finish my answer.
Doesn't care.
They did not.
That's what I see.
There's a case where.
Well, it wasn't done yet, but.
Fully, fully dismissed, fully dismissed.
It was.
It was a judge and, and someone filed an appeal and it is uh.
And it's not dismissed.
Yes, it is.
It's an appeal. You just said some of your stuff.
Either way, I would like to insert for the record that any public records request during lawsuits, during litigation. Go through Corsa. So dude, does everybody here understand that Corsa has the records request that our legal counsel? For this lawsuit has what you're asking for. Why would we continue to ask for it when our legal counsel has it already?
Well, if we've got people like the commissioners and yourself issuing pub- public records requests and statements on. Previous employees and what their press releases are and so on and so forth. I think that we need to have that on file.
So you're saying we would, I would falsify a document? You're saying I would falsify, do you, are you saying that human resources department or Corsa would falsify documents? Everything that is going through lawsuit is going through Corsa. That's all I want everybody to understand. It is not to be discussed. Our attorneys are handling it. And we will not be discussing litigation. At least human resources won't be. Thank you.
Thought that included in the uh to be given redacted aversion to the legal counsel. Uh in order to help the county with their defense to discredit the employee that just became promoted, so. I just would like to have it because I think the public.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I want to make sure that every, every commissioner understands that if you lose your clerk, you won't have a clerk. And understand exactly who becomes the clerk, should that happen. Ohio revise code.
We don't even have to.
If the board.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with it. I, I've read it.
But she, she has a floor. She has a floor.
If the Board of Commissioners has not appointed a full-time clerk pursuant to section three oh five point one three of the, of the revised code. The county auditor by virtue of his office shall be secretary of the board. I don't really think you want me sitting up there.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go to the phone lines. Hit star six, identify yourself. Please keep it short and sweet.
Hello, this is Mike Salamoni. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, it's Mike Salamoni, Trumbull County Transit. Um, I know there's been a couple of things going on there regarding transportation. Do you mind if I um comment on them?
Please, Michael.
Okay, first I just wanna say the ODIC grant that you guys, that we were working on was due September eleventh. I did submit that August seventeenth, so that's in the works. Uh notification for that will be November twenty seventh. Regarding WRTA, I found out Monday. From Dean Harris that they did not receive funding for the next project. So I do not have a date when WRTA will be stopping service. I sent him an email asking him what date will service be stopped. Also in that email. I requested that he has his staff members send me any name, any of his clients. Um, and then they, we can transfer them over to our system. So that's what I'm working on at this point. And that would include both fixed route clients as well as the uh their pair of transit. Um, now granted with fixed route, you don't have names, but I said, make sure you, you can pass out. Con- my contact information, have people call me and we'll get them. If we can transform, we will transform to our system. Now that's gonna put a lot more on our system, but that's okay. Um, so that's where that's at right now and I will keep you updated on where that's at when I get information back from Dean Harris. Uh, the other thing I would like to just give you is a quick update on ridership. Up to date, we've transported twenty one thousand five hundred trips. For the year, we'll do about. Almost thirty eight thousand. We're only about two hundred short of what we did last year. So we're staying within our, I mean, we're still at the same where we were at last year pretty much. In regarding, in regards to joining WRTA, um, I believe as you're aware. Um, I put a three-year plan together. Twenty twenty five is the third year. What the commissioners had asked for at the time was to have solid numbers for transportation. And that's what we have. Diane has solid financial numbers. I have solid ridership numbers. And in late twenty twenty four or early twenty twenty five, we will be coming to the commissioners. Giving them several options. One will be to join WRTA and we know the process, what that will be. Or to continue the way we're doing and we have to figure out how we're gonna fund it at that point. So those are really gonna be the two options or we don't fund it at all.
Or a hybrid version of it, Michael, as well.
Right. So I mean, those are the options. We've already talked about it, you know? Especially myself and Mr. Chantel La Mesa. I've talked a little bit to Commissioner Malone about it, but not too much because. He had just started at the time. But that's where we're at with this. So um in twenty twenty five, we have to make a decision. How we want to continue this transportation. That's all I really have to say at this point.
What did you talk to them about? I'm sorry, what did you talk to them about separately?
Okay, Commissioner, no, I didn't say separately, Commissioner Frenchco. What I said was, and you were at one of the meetings. I put together a three-year plan. I've given it to all three of you. You do have the three-year plan. And in it, it does state by three options or four options. One is to continue running the way we are. Two is to join WRTA. Three is to let it just uh not do it at all. But if we continue the way we are, we gotta figure out where the money's coming from. Now, I do not have a dollar. I do not have a dollar in my front of me. That's Diane's area. But I know um. This year is gonna be somewhere around one point six million. this year is going to be somewhere around 1.6 million to run the system.
That's not my question, Mike. My question is, when did you talk to each of the commissioners? You said you talked to Commissioner Malone and that you spoke to Morrow, so.
Okay.
When did you speak to them? Yeah.
Commissioner, Cantle Mesa was at that meeting with the, I believe, I had two different meetings, one with the mayor, one with the, um,
Township.
Township. Right, and I can't, I apologize, I'm not sure which one you were at, Commissioner, but you were at one of those meetings and I explained the service then. Commissioner Malloy, I talked to him briefly before he was elected and I talked to, uh, O'Brien too at the same time because I wanted both to know where we stood on transportation.
Okay.
So I talked to, uh, O'Brien.
Thank you.
And Malloy about that. You also knew about it too, because you were at one of the meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, hang up, Mike. Okay, next, next call, hit star six, please.
Good afternoon.
Yes, your name, please.
My question is, Warren Township has 53% of its residents who.
We need your name, please, ma'am, your name.
Sandra Rounds.
Okay.
It says I'm muted.
We can hear you.
It muted me again. I'm sorry, it muted me again. My name is Sandra Round. Levitsburg.
Yes.
My question is, we have 53% of our township residents who are up to date on their property taxes and 47% who are severely delinquent on their property taxes. Is there any way that the county can start collecting those back property taxes so that Warren Township might be able to get some of that revenue that's owed to help our police department and our fire departments?
So, so if you don't mind, Commissioners, um, so tha- that's a question more for the treasurer and he's separately elected and he's in charge of collecting the taxes. I know that he's putting, uh, different programs together and payment plans for different individuals and he's going to continue to do that, uh, to try to make things. Try to make things as, um, facilitate things for people to be able to pay, uh, and for the county to recoup those dollars. So, um, we can certainly, uh, have that conversation with the, with the treasurer and if you, if you'd like to, you can call one of us. You can call one of us or you can call him directly and we can facilitate that conversation.
I, I would love to because we are in dire need in Warren Township.
I, I know that there is, that is a big problem in the township.
There's phone numbers online too. You can, you can look and call the record, call the, I'm sorry, the treasurer. They have a.
And also about all the the dilapidated properties.
If, if you need assistance. If you need assistance, call the commissioner's office. Uh, I know you have our number, I'm sure. Uh, if not, but yes, call the commissioner's office, one of the commissioners will help you out for sure. We can facilitate.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, next resident, please. Star six, unmute yourself. Yes, your name, please.
Yes, sir, this is Malloy, this is from New York, Warren, Ohio, how are you doing?
I can't understand.
We're having a really hard time hearing you, sir. Can you please speak in your phone clearly?
Is that better?
That's, that's a little bit better, go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. Yes, sir, it's, uh, Paul Amos, Warren, Ohio. I was just calling, uh, touch base with what Mr. Plant hit on, uh, the records request. Uh, we have submitted record requests in the past to Commissioner Frenchco and when she has denied those, she has defaulted the answer basically to your legal counsel, saying that they are not approving for that to be released. Uh, what I would like to do is send those requests in once again and if yourself and Mr. Cantle Mesa will release that information uh, from counsel to be released, we would definitely appreciate that, but, you know, she's basically, uh, kicking the can down the road towards other parties to give her an alve, so that she doesn't have to release the information herself.
If, if there is such, uh, an opinion from the, from the prosecutor's office, I waive the privilege if that's, um, I, I, we're going back a long ways. I don't remember and I, I'm sure if I saw it, I'd know, but, um.
Yeah, correct, so.
Nonetheless.
Okay, all right, that sounds great.
If it's such.
Yeah, and absolutely, and it has been a long time, I understand that. So in, uh, good faith with your office and, uh, the other employees in the building, I will resubmit those, uh, probably this afternoon or tomorrow. And we'll act, uh, we'll just go forward like they're new requests referencing the old dates. And if you guys could fill those in accordance with, uh, the Yellow Book policies, we would definitely appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, let's try one more, um. Next caller, star six. To unmute yourself, please. One last try, star six, if you want to be heard.
Going once, if not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Mr. Cantle Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.